I'm going to call the October 21st, 2024 meeting of the Select Board to Order. I see we have everyone, full house, in the room, so we don't have to take a roll call. I'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody have a public comment? Please, stand up.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Gwen Acton. I live on Elm Street in Concord. And as you all know, the residential tax exemption was adopted last year with the hope and good intentions of approving affordability in Concord. We didn't do a lot of study, seemed like a good idea, so we adopted it. Unfortunately, it's become clear that the reality is that the tax exemption is going to make the town less affordable for those residents who are most vulnerable. Why? Because the tax exemption shifts tax burdens onto rental units which tend to be occupied with those of lower income. So to understand this, let's take a, consider this. Homeowners in a $1.2 or $1.5 million home are being subsidized by half million dollar rental units which on average are occupy, have occupants who have less financial resources than homeowners. I think we would agree with that. Somebody owns a $1.5 million house probably has more resources than somebody renting a half million dollar rental unit. And yet they're paying a higher, that's a higher rent, a higher tax on that rental unit. Now, we might wish and hope that landlords wouldn't pass these tax increases on to tenants. And that was, there were some, you know, folks who are really hoping that, right? But the truth, the truth is that the MIT Center for Real Estate did research which found that 80 to 90% of increases are eventually passed on to tenants. That's what the research says, and we don't have any research to say otherwise. So similarly, some people have called the tax exemption a progressive tax. However, at least two analyses, one by the town of Lexington and one by the Massachusetts Budget and Policy Center, have concluded that the tax exemption is rather a regressive tax because of this shift to rental units. The Lexington study concluded that a real estate tax exemption, quote, "may appear to be progressive when considering only owner-occupied, single-family homes. When considering all types of residential properties and their occupants, it is not progressive." It's on page 54 of that report, if you want to look at that. While the, while the real estate exemption, tax exemption was well-intentioned, I think there were good reasons why people wanted to do it, it not only, we're a year later, we have more information now. And it not only fails to accomplish the town's goals of improving affordability and diversity, it is actually regressive tax that is, increases the tax burden on rental units which house the town's most vulnerable residents. So clearly, now that we have more information, now that we understand this better, like we didn't do an extensive, you know, we didn't do an extensive study, you know, the town of Lexington, they did 190 page, you know, that's how long their report is, and this is what they found, is is that this was going to hurt those who are most vulnerable. Now that we understand that better, then it would be unconscionable, now that we have this information, to reinstate it this year. Concord must find better solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? None online? Seeing that, I'm going to move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that people would like to have moved off for discussion?
Well, Mary, I had one issue. When I went back through the minutes, there's no discussion of our ARPA discussion on September 9th. So there's no details there. And the reason why I went back was I was looking for a discussion on increasing an amount for the Route 2 study. So I just want you to be, there's no discussion in the minutes at all for ARPA. So I don't know if we should vote on those now or not.
What, what does it say in those minutes?
It says nothing. It's not in, it's not in the minutes. There's no subheading for ARPA. We had a full, lengthy discussion.
On that night?
Yeah, on that night.
I don't remember which, which night. I know we talked about it.
Let's, let's put them off and figure it out.
Okay.
I'll take a note and check it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
And then, I had passed along one comment on the meeting minutes. I don't know if those have been updated.
It has been.
They have been, okay.
So just in addition, I will pass on, because my comments weren't in those minutes either. But if we're not going to vote on them tonight, I'll pass them on, Andrea.
Good. Okay, great. So we'll pull that off. Let me see, I see that the gift for the, the 250th gift is now specifically for trees, right? Okay.
There's three gifts for, two for trees and one for, in support of an advertising campaign that the committee had.
Right.
But it looks now.
Previously decided to.
The third one is for the ad campaign.
Yes, qualified.
Why do I see it's for the memorial trees? Which, which version do I have?
The first two are the trees.
Yeah, the agenda was corrected.
Yeah. The hard copy that was on your table was corrected.
So the third one is $1,100 to be used for trees. So all three are for trees?
No.
No.
The third one is.
The third one was updated.
In support of the ad campaign for the 250th.
Okay, so when it says, so you had a question about that?
Yeah, I did. And so that question was just to make sure that the gift was going to something that had previously been, to defray the costs of a campaign that had been previously decided to be done by the committee.
Correct.
Okay, good. So, go ahead.
All right, so I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Less than a minute.
You have the September 9th minutes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, Mark, you want to read the Select Board appointment?
Sure. Move that the Select Board appoint and reappoint the 2229 Main Street Oversight Committee for terms to expire May 31st, 2027. And those would be Raymond Brutamessa of 1,001 Main Street, Leonard Rapoli of 34 Everett Street, Department 10D, Pam Rockwell of 1810 Main Street, and Frederick Seward of 158 Spencer Brook Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to appoint the election officers pursuant to the town, the Town clerk's memo is included in the packet in Mass. General Laws 54, Section 12. We're appointing 19 voters as election officers for terms to expire July 31st, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thanks to all those workers, they work so hard.
Important work.
Mentioned to detail.
And finally, appointments by the town manager with approval for the Select Board move to reappoint retroactively to the Commission on Disabilities for a term to expire May 31st, 2025. Jennifer Brook of 31 Oxbow Road, Lloyd Price of 152 Holdenwood Road, and Merrill Schwartz of 1471 Main Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we leave this, I just want to go back and thank the people who've donated money for the trees. Nancy Nelson and Michael Lawson, Judith Perkins, and Charles and Julie Davidson, thank you very much. I think this will be a wonderful permanent memorial, and every little bit helps. Okay, Town Manager's Report.
Okay, thank you and good evening. As previously mentioned, a total of five town employees were deployed to provide aid to our neighbors in North and South Carolina in response to Hurricane Helene. For the first time in a number of years, and I think I mentioned this the last meeting, CMLP was able to deploy a two-person crew to assist in power restoration efforts. Three additional staff were deployed as part of FEMA's Region One Task Force to aid in search and rescue and recovery efforts. I'm happy to report that all five are back. They have returned safely. They are all happy and really feeling great about the work that they were able to do. I think one of the benefits to the town, in addition to, to employees being able to feel great about what they do here and to be able to help other people, is the amazing training opportunities that they are able to undertake, particularly our FEMA Region One Task Force participants. They participate in a lot of training outside, and, and they are able to bring that training back to the work that they do here. And in particular, Assistant Fire Chief Walter Latta does a lot with deployment logistics. And he is the person who puts together, he's, he's our main staff person putting together our response plans for all of our efforts, all of the parades, the large public activities, the very large public activity that we're going to have in April. He's very much involved in that, and the town is able to benefit from his experience with, with the Region One. In addition to Assistant Fire Chief, I mentioned before, our two CMLP employees that participated were Rich Fadili and Matt McNamara. And then the other two members of the Region One Task Force are Erin McClosco and Todd Neme from the Fire Department. You probably haven't heard Lieutenant Neme's name mentioned, but he, he is the fifth member. So early voting is, is underway. It began on Saturday and it continues through Friday, November 1st. Early voting hours this week, Monday through Friday, are 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Saturday, the 26th, 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. Then the following week, Monday to Thursday, all day, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Friday, just business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And again, concluding on Friday, November 1st. There is more information on the town's website. I wanted to talk a few minutes about the rollout of the solid waste recycling program. I know that you have received some correspondence from residents, and we've had some people speak at public comment. You know, this is a new program. It's a change to a program that has been in existence for 20 years. It is a voluntary, subscription-based program. And at this point in time, we actually have more residents subscribed in the solid waste recycling plan than we ever have had in the past. There are some issues with the, with the program. We're hearing similar issues, definitely a concern with the, the very large recycling containers. So the recycling containers that, that are available now are 96 gallon. They're big, but they're, they're meant to be big so that they can hold cardboard. People recycle a lot of, of cardboard. We are working with our vendor waste management to see if we can bring in a 64-gallon recycling container, which is significantly smaller. I would imagine that may still be too large for some people. And unfortunately, we think that's probably the best that, that we can do with the program.
So sorry, Carrie, would that be then, people would have an option to go to the smaller one?
To, yeah, if, if we can secure the 64 gallon, then people could, could opt to use a 64 gallon recycling versus the 96.
Okay.
I did want to just mention the two benefits, the two big benefits to this program. And I know you heard this a few months back from Public Works when they were here to talk to you about this. But we are, the attempt here is to achieve two specific community goals. Moving to a single-stream recycling system will reduce the number of trucks needed for collection, and the trucks will not have to travel to multiple recycling locations because we have the single stream. Reducing the overall carbon footprint of the program. The town of Concord is one of the last communities in the Commonwealth to have a dual-stream recycling program before we move to single stream. Moving to an automated collection will result in newer trucks with better emissions. We also will have the first fully-electric trash truck on our streets as, as a result of, of this program. The, what, what is interesting is, I think, just the visual of the 96-gallon recycled container and the 35-gallon trash container. That is, that is much smaller. We're actually not hearing people push back on, on that size. And we do, we will take, we do have disposal tags for overflow bags. So if you have more than what fits in the 35 gallon, you can, you can purchase tags for bags.
Do you purchase them in the same locations? Are they available now, like at CVS, Crosby's? Where, where are they?
So I, I believe they're in the same location, but we do have quite a bit of information on the website, and would encourage anybody to.
Yeah, we didn't find that particular thing of where to buy these tags.
Okay. I, I will have to get back to you on that.
What was the information about the program that says that if you have tags from the previous system?
Right, right.
You can use them for overflow bags.
Right. Right.
And Carrie, just on the trash, is there, this came up with the Council on Aging. There's also a concern about cost. And is there any sort of low come, low-income sort of subsid, subsidization that's being offered to certain citizens that might qualify?
So there is not at, at this time, but I would encourage people, if that is an issue, to reach out to Public Works and, and to talk about that specifically. I wanted to mention that we, we did earlier today receive word from Town Council that the Appeals Court issued its decision in the Estabrook litigation, and the court affirmed the land court's decision in the town's favor. So we will be issuing just a brief statement, probably tomorrow. We've had some requests from a couple different news outlets for a statement. We will be issuing a brief statement. The parties to the case have the right to seek further appellate review through the Supreme Judicial Court. They have 21 days to do so. I wanted to provide a brief update on Jarrow Park, and I hope probably this will be the last time that, that there's an update to this board on Jarrow Park on Phase 1. So we have closed out the contract with Coal Construction. That was the ongoing contract, with the exception of a few remaining punch list items. We do understand that there continues to be an interest to have the town look at the existing landscape plan. Last week, I was able to meet with staff from Public Works, DPLM, Recreation, and the Recreation Commission Chair. And given the Rec Commission's interest in seeing additional park development and in support of their CPC application for, to look at the feasibility of additional development, we agreed that it would make the most sense to ask that any proposed adjustments to the landscape plan be vetted through the Rec Commission to make sure that anything that is being considered is both being considered in a public process that is accessible to all, and that it's vetted through the lens of whatever additional work the Rec Commission would like to see there. So that's, that's the direction we expect to be moving. The, the park is used very heavily enjoyed by residents, non-residents, and it really is a wonderful addition.
One thing on Jarrow.
Yep.
I noticed that the restrooms are now closed for the season presumably, as of October 15th. I happened to be out there for around an hour the other day, and I noticed that that was a disappointing circumstance for a number of people who approached them. So I don't, do, do we know when they, are they all winter now? When would they reopen? And I'm wondering whether maybe October 15th seems like it might be a little bit early in the season to close it, if that's.
So we're happy to receive feedback. They, they are closed. That, that is the budget, that is, that was the project plan, that is the budget. If there is interest in having restroom facilities there open longer in the season, we will take that into consideration when we put the budget together for fiscal '26. But that, that was the budgeted plan.
So the signage might be helpful to then say when they're expected to reopen, so that.
Yeah.
Well, I can't wait, but at least they'll know when they, so for, for future planning, if it's going to be seasonal, we might as well put what the season is so that people can plan accordingly.
And I, I would assume it's closed, similar to ride out, right? I don't know if ride out's closed now, but I wonder, going forward, we should have a standard, right? Consistent standard.
I, I believe all of the, the restrooms at park facilities are closed now.
The, the other thing about Jarrow is, first of all, you know I love Jarrow. I go there frequently. There are a lot of cyclists that are using the gravel paths that are walking paths, and I'm, I'm just thinking ahead about the problems we're having at Junction Park as far as pedestrians and cyclists. And it's clearly a bike path, there's a bike path, but then there's clearly, I think, trails for pedestrians, especially people who are somewhat mobility challenged. So I'm wondering if, if signage there asking bikes to stay on the bike path would prevent a lot of the issues that were seen at Junction Park. Because, I mean, if you have mobility issues and bicycles on that path, it just makes it a lot harder.
So I, I'm happy to pass those comments over to Recreation for them to consider.
Thank you.
I wanted to mention again that road construction continues. It, it's very evident the roads are looking great. I've heard a lot of positive comments, even from some young people who are happy that they can ride their bikes in places they couldn't ride their bikes before. So we expect paving work to continue through the end of November, as long as the weather holds out. One or more of you asked me recently about the crosswalk at Main and Walden. So the only work that remains there is painting the crosswalks. And the crosswalks between the two white lines will be painted in a color with a pattern yet to be determined. But again, one, one or more of you asked about a raised walkway there, and I went back to engineering to ask about that. And there, there was some discussion about raising those, that crosswalk in the early planning phases, but that is not what was designed, and it's not what, what will be, what is being implemented there.
So, so there were public forums, and I know it was when we had a transportation planner, and they put the different materials on the.
Yeah.
Table, and there was a lot of discussion about what people liked and what they didn't like. And, and so, and we had the Historical Commission involved, and it was quite a lengthy community process. And then, and then, so then what was the, how did that information get translated into, what was the process to go from there to, we're going to plant, paint lines?
I, I couldn't go through, I don't know without further conversation.
Yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to know more about that process, because I, I want to avoid things where we have public forums and then we don't always, citizens notice that we don't always do what they expected when they participated in these forums.
Yeah, I recall that also, and I also recall them saying it was going to be a raised crosswalk there, so I'm not sure how and when that got changed.
Okay. Can you remind me of that? Because I can't take it out right now.
I think that's an action item.
So for, for future, and then, Megan, I'll, I'll go to you on cell if, if you want to provide an update. So just a, a couple of future items I wanted to mention. Our fiscal '26 to '35 capital planning process is underway. Requests are due October 31st. They're coming in through departments and, and from committees through staff. Also, we, we are incorporating requests from the school. These requests will be compiled and reviewed in a joint meeting with the Select Board, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee on November 18. And at this time, we're really just going to present what we have, and, and the CFO has mentioned, sort of in an unvetted format, because we, we won't have a significant amount of time to review. But we will be doing a follow-up meeting again with those three boards on December 16. And at that point, we would expect to have some recommendations. Our fiscal '26 budget planning process will kick off officially on November 18 as well. We expect to come to the Select Board in December and January for some feedback on the budget process. The CFO and I will be meeting with the Finance Committee on November 7, and we will be providing a response to the fiscal '26 guideline information request that the Finance Committee submitted in August. And then, Megan, did you, anything on cell?
Sure. There's been a couple developments since the last time we discussed this. So the town, we issued a request for proposals for cell infrastructure at the cupola of 40 Stowe Street, which is the umbrella. We had proposals due at the end of September. We did receive one proposal from Cell Co. Partnership, which is DBA Verizon Wireless. Unfortunately, the proposal that we received did not meet our minimum requirements as outlined in the RFP. So that submission was, was deemed non-compliant and non-responsive, and it was rejected from the town's consideration. So we are working with our Town Council and our consultants and the umbrella. We will be working with them to look over, you know, the RFP to see if there's any alterations that we could make to adjust it in a way to see if we can get compliant bids. And so we're at the early stages of that. We have really just kind of gone over to see, you know, that it was unresponsive, and we're, we're not ready to throw in the towel at this location. We're going to see if we can make an adjustment and, and see if we can put, go back out to bed for this location in the next couple weeks. We also have made progress on the, the second step of our strategy that we, we discussed this past summer, which was to issue an RFP at the landfill. And as you can recall, that, there was a citizen's petition urging the town to issue an RFP at this location. And I'm happy to say that has been issued this week. It is posted, available to receive on our, on our town website, and it's been posted in all of the typical locations, combines and goods and services. And we put an ad in the bridge, so we're hoping to have responses for that location. They're due, I believe, the, just before Thanksgiving. So we will follow up on that, and is that it? Thank you.
So do we, do we have any feedback as to why people didn't respond? Did they say, "I'm not responding because," or did they just not respond?
For.
For the, for the, for the RFP.
So we, we did receive one, we did receive one response. Honestly, I, I think that if we look at our coverage maps, I'm, I'm not surprised that we didn't receive multiple proposals, because there are other carriers that do have some coverage. It is a real kind of dark spot on the coverage map for Verizon, so I did expect a proposal from them, and we did receive one. However, we are disappointed that it didn't include all of the items that we, that we listed. And my understanding is that some of the items that, that we were looking for, which was in the best interest of the community, are really asking for some detailed analysis at this stage, and we're looking to see exactly what equipment's going to be there. How is this all going to work? And, and it's, I think, my understanding after speaking with the, with the vendor is that it's difficult for the, sometimes for them to invest in detailed project plans without kind of the go-ahead from the community. And so how can we rectify this? I don't have that answer yet. I wonder, I wonder if there are, you know, some conversations we can have and some adjustments to make to see if we can find a way to move forward and partner with a project at this location. But we, there's still more to be discovered at this point.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yep, thanks.
Is that it, Megan?
Yes.
Okay, that's it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the next thing is the Chair's Report. I wanted to announce that apparently the Mass. Cultural Council has awarded two $15,000 grants to the West Concord Cultural District Center and the Concord Center Cultural District Center. These are ones that we typically get. And then these, the committees for these different centers have a process where they award this to people. So we got the two $15,000 per site this year. I want to give an update on some of the progress that's being made or isn't being made on some home rule petitions that have been passed at recent, not recent, but at past town meetings. The first was the real estate transfer and the building permit fee that would fund housing. And as we know, neither one of those passed through the leadership at the state level. Those will have to be resubmitted. We also had an outstanding home rule petition to charge for checkout bags. That is in limbo right now. And we also had a home rule petition to allow ranked choice voting here at the local level, and that's in study, which I think is one step better than limbo.
[laughing]
But I don't think it's going any, I don't think it's, I'm not hopeful for that right now. But, so I just wanted to give an update. We haven't forgotten about them, but that's. We haven't forgotten about them, but that's where they stand right now. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we're getting, we have gotten some feedback. We asked the chairs of the town boards and committees to give us feedback on the liaison role. We're getting some of that, and Andrea's collecting it, and we hope to bring back the comments and the data that we get from that survey to this board in a future meeting. That's about it, I have. Let's do liaison reports. Do you want to go first, Wendy?
Sure. I don't have many. Let me just start with the school committee. The school committee has approved their goals for this fiscal year. I'm not going through the list, but I just want to note, they are doing monthly tracking of their goals, and they're going to sort of color code them green or red, meaning green, we're on track, and red just means we want to have some discussion. So they're going to have some monthly tracking of their goals. So they've got a really good process in place, which is great. The other thing that they did in their last meeting was to, they had a presentation of the youth risk behavior survey results, which is, I think it's annual. And the good news is that there's some good, positive changes that they found through the survey. At the same time, I also, and it went through, it was the results, but it also was coupled with all the programs and actions that the K through 12 schools have been putting in place to help address some of these needs of our students. And I have to say, it was a fantastic presentation. It was about 45 minutes. And so I just encourage any citizen who doesn't normally watch the school committee to go back and look at it. If you're interested and concerned about what's going on with our students, it's a great program. There's a lot of resources being provided, so kudos to the schools. It's really obviously bearing fruit, because it's having positive results, so, so that's great. Cameron and I met once on our flag policy. We'll talk about that in a future meeting. And then I also just wanted to note that I did attend the MMA Legislative Breakfast Meeting last Friday, which was a good session, and those slides will be available on the website. But two updates. One was that I understand the climate action bill was agreed to, so there will be moving forward with that bill, which is great. And then, in a separate conversation with Carmen Gentile, he suggested the economic development bill was expected to be agreed to as well. I don't know if it has, but they expect to vote on those together. At least that was his opinion, so that's all.
When would that be, Wendy, do you know?
I don't, I don't know, because they still needed to discuss. He was thinking it was going to be sometime this week.
Right.
But I don't know.
Right, I have that in my report, too, that...
That's it for me, yeah.
Great, okay. Do you want to go, go ahead?
Yeah, I have similar information, that the climate bill has passed in the Senate, and that includes changes to Mass Port's charter. And so it needs to be finalized in the House again, you know, they're doing everything all over again.
Okay.
And then the economic development bill includes, it's a part of the budget supplement for 20 million, and it includes a really nice portion for the 250th events. And that has been adopted by the House and will be voted by the Senate this week. So let's hope.
Do you know if the economic bill includes the local option to increase? It doesn't?
That's the municipal powers act or something.
Oh, you're right, that's a different bill.
It's not the right term. It does include that. I was listening for that.
It didn't?
Those are in limbo.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Are you all set?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so some more news on the 250th. I attended this fantastic event at the First Parish and Wright Tavern on Friday, the reenactment of the First Provincial Congress. Simon organized, a number of his colleagues, and so all of these House members showed up from all over the state wearing three-cornered hats, and there were other reenactors like General Gage, and everyone was booing him, and it was just a very lively, wonderful event. And there is a lot of work being done on public safety for the 250th. I was just amazed at how much work they're doing. And we're going to hear a presentation about that in, I'm not sure when, December or January, whatever. Also, I'm excited to announce, there is now a button that you can click on, on the 250th website, and also on the town, thanks to Anthony and the whole subcommittee there. If you want to donate to the 250th for events, you just go on the Concord homepage and click on 250th, and you click on a button. It's wonderful. I did it, it's easy, and it's great. The Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee has several openings. They're especially looking for a veteran, and someone who likes history, traditions, is well organized, which is basically, you know, any interested citizen, please submit your volunteer card. And finally, on transportation, the study, if you recall, we started with 100,000. We now have two pieces to it. The planning piece, which is going to keep going with that 100,000 on a track, and then a second speedy track to do some engineering right away. So by year end, the consultant is supposed to have an asset management plan and information for our capital plan for roads, sidewalks, intersections, and assistance with the Route 2 and the rotary. So all of that will feed in to our capital plan. So if I got any of that wrong, Carrie or Megan, just correct me, but...
What's the engineering work? Does that, the sidewalks and...
And the road work.
The road, okay.
All of it. What are we going to do for our second, third? They're going to have like a real plan for it.
Great.
That's it for me.
Great. Mark, you want to go?
Sure. Starting with the MCI Advisory Board that met this afternoon, we're planning a couple of things. The next opportunity for the public to hear about that work is going to be the Women's Voters First Friday Event on November 1st at the library. I think that's at 10:00 in the morning?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do at 10:00.
10:00 in the morning. At that event, we'll have the chairs of the advisory board. I'll be there representing the select board and the advisory board. And we'll also be hearing from the chairs of the subcommittees, the one on public engagement and land use. The board is developing the requirements for RFPs to try and, and get started on the visioning and master planning process that the town is going to lead. We heard from the chairs at our last meeting, and so they're building on that work. We did hear from Rep. Cattaldo's staff person, Kyle, today, that apparently the state accounting and finance has concluded that we do in fact get $725,000, and it's supposed to be any day now. So we've heard that a couple of times before, but they say mid-October and tick-tock.
Mark, can I ask you about that? I thought we were getting 475, like, what happened?
So...
I'm happy, but just curious.
475 went in on one side of the legislature, I think the Senate, and then 250 went in on the House, and they were worded slightly differently, so they're literally considered two separate earmarks.
Oh, so are they for different, slightly different projects?
They're all for MCI Concord planning. So we're encouraged by that and are expecting to engage in a robust process. So the first, the discussion today went primarily in the direction of pursuing both a lead group to support the community engagement, website, communications, setting up meetings, those kinds of things, and on a parallel track, also a master planning and visioning that leads to zoning, sort of more technical. So we anticipate that those are going to run on slightly different timelines. It'll probably take us longer to get the second one stood up and ready. So the first one's a little bit more straightforward, because it's communications and relations. Also, on the communications side, local knowledge, expertise, familiarity with the community in getting things done in Concord is really important. On the other side, it's more developing the land use and those types of, that more technical side, so it doesn't necessarily have to be that. So that's the direction that the board is headed in.
Can I have, I have two questions. I like everything you heard. I think that they are getting work done, that's great. I didn't hear the word budget, and I think we asked them to come back on December 2nd for, with a budget. So is that, is that...
Yes. The goal is to develop a budget as clearly as we possibly can. A lot of that information, in terms of what is this really going to cost, is going to come back once we get an RFP out on the street and start to get some understanding of how much vendors might charge for this kind of work. The legal and government affairs, which is the third subgroup and the one that I'm participating directly in, has taken on the role of worrying about sources and uses. So the two other groups are supposed to worry about getting their function done, planning out their work and doing it as quickly as possible while the, while the government and legal affairs will consolidate that with what the requests are, how fast we think we're going to spend the money, and use that as a way of surfacing any, the visibility that we'll necessarily have to have to say, how is this in fact going to be dispersed, and how is it funded? So right now, we have, in theory, we have more funds than we know what to do with, even though we don't actually have the funds yet. But at some point, that's going to reverse, and so we're committed to keeping, keeping track of exactly how we plan to spend money, on what and what timeframes, so that we can hopefully stay ahead of the actual needs and not slow the group down at all by tracking that budget.
Good. I have one other comment. I guess it's good news that we have 725, if that actually happens. I just, I hope we're aware of the fact that we're spending tax, we're still spending taxpayers' money.
Yes.
And the goal isn't to spend the money.
Right.
The goal is to get the right work done.
Right.
Okay, so they're stewards of the money, they're not, they're not like, just, okay.
And it has to be spent by June 30th?
Well, that's...
Next year, is that...
Yeah, that's what we understand about state allocation. Now, what the options might be to spend that, you know, to actually get the work, that's part of, so what we're trying to do is not slow down the groups that are trying to define the work and come up with the output by separating out that, figuring out the details of exactly what's available, when and how, and if we need to do any advocacy to try and make some adjustments and that, we've got a separate group dedicated to that. So we're trying to split off funding the project from doing the project.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Because otherwise, the doers get all wrapped around the axle trying to figure out whether they have money. So, okay.
Okay.
Middle School Building Committee, the middle school remains really remarkably on track. The, I think I had mentioned that there was some limited Saturday overtime being used to try to address critical path items as the, as the buildings get built, and that seems to have been quite effective. Also, just, you know, we were dealing with the funding for the procurement agent and the work that Gail Dowd has been doing on the project, and I would just say that, you know, that discussion last week about her role and the fact that the financial controls of this project have been so well managed is really largely due to her, and, you know, kudos to her and the team for how they're doing there. So that, you know, the school is looking forward to and beginning to plan for events like How to Move. So that's, that's important as we head towards our February movement date. And I think that'll be it for me today.
Great, thank you. Cameron?
Okay, a couple of things. So first off, wanted to just talk about the town meeting study committee. The group there has done a lot of really, really great work, so I just want to make sure that everybody's aware. We've been trying to do some advertising, but there is an in-person forum tomorrow on the 22nd of October at 7:00 PM at Harvey Wheeler. So folks can come there, we're, you know, Eric and team are running, Eric Moore, who's the chair of the committee, are set up to run a session there where people can sort of express some of their opinions, and we've got some, you know, they've got some things set up to sort of run kind of a forum there tomorrow at Harvey Wheeler at 7:00 o'clock. There will also be, for those who can't make it live tomorrow, there will also be an online Zoom forum on the 29th of October. So similarly, for people to hear what's, you know, what's going on, what are some of the choices and alternatives, but also to be able to sort of express their opinions, you know, as to what it is that they think they would like to see to help improve town meeting. And then also, I just, lastly on that, want to mention that the survey is still open. I think it's open until the end of the month. So there's a survey there, again, where people can go on and respond, you know, to the questions around town meeting. So secondly, then, just from the light plant perspective, we do now have a board member opening at the, at the light plant. So, you know, connecting in with Carrie, who's responsible for appointing that board member, but just making that, making sure people are aware, just in case there's candidates out there, right? You know, that will be, I think, you know, looking at, you know, who the potential candidates are from a board perspective. Wendy mentioned the flag policy, subcommittee, so we'll be, I think we're getting ready for maybe the next meeting, if we're on the November 4th agenda. I think we'll have one more subcommittee meeting between now and then to just make sure that we're...
Just let me know.
Yeah, that we're fully prepared. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention, I think we were all there, but last week we had the opportunity to be with Congresswoman Lori Chahan. And so that was a very nice event for those of you, just to make sure that you're aware that we were able to go with her to the Wright Tavern and also to the Minuteman Park. Those are some places that were in receipt of some federal funds. It was also, as Terry talked about, like, some of the things around talking with some of the park rangers about plans for the 250th. What are some of the things that are happening there at the Wright Tavern? So it was a really nice event for everybody, so. So I think that's it from, from me.
So what's the response been to the town's meeting study committee survey?
Yes, so there's, I don't have the, up to the minute numbers, but I think we're close to about 700 responses.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, so, yeah, and a lot of very rich, a lot of feedback, right, a lot of written feedback. So people that, we've seen, seen a lot of comments that people have made, in addition to sort of, you know, checking the boxes on some of the questions, right? So I think it's been really good to see a lot of that, a lot of that feedback, and there'll be an opportunity for the group to sort of pull all of that together. And I think it's December 2nd that is on the, that they're teed up to come to the select board and talk about, here were the results of the survey, here were the results of the online forums, you know, maybe some initial, you know, at least directional recommendations, right, to sort of take back to the committee, so.
Great. Actually, that committee reports to town meeting. It doesn't report to the select board. It's an unusual committee, but, but it will be good to have them here.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify.
Got it. So it may be a sub-meeting within our meeting, I don't know.
Cameron, do you know, are they getting people who haven't traditionally participated in town meeting?
There is a mix of responses, right? So you have people who have not, I mean, that is one of the questions. So you are seeing people who have not traditionally participated in town meeting, as well as those who have, and probably a lot of people who aren't saying, I'm not, I haven't gone to everyone, but I have gone to some of them, right? And so you definitely are seeing that, that mix of responses.
I did my survey. Everyone else should, too.
The V-CAM has put in its link to the MCI Concord website, the responses, there were 317 of them to the first public forum that they had, along with the comments, and there's a nice summary of things that people expressed interest in through the, through the communications and anybody that's interested in that additional information. That was published in the last week, so.
Good. For my liaison reports, most of the committees for whom I'm a liaison are queued up to come and talk to the select board, so I won't steal their thunder. But I will say that I did attend the Concord CAN meeting recently and listened to a presentation by the new head of the Mothers Out Front, which was really good. What was interesting to me is that during the comments section, there was a discussion about approval of pipe replacements that we approve here for National Grid. And the people were wondering, and I know we ask this every time one of these come in front of us, is this a replacement, or is this to increase capacity? And we get that it's, you know, the answer is always, it's just a replacement and mostly for safety. But I think we, I heard people asking us to push a little bit more on, on some of those conversations.
Yeah, we did get one a couple of years ago that was a...
Yeah, we did get one, um, a couple of years ago that was a really big expansion.
Yep.
So, but usually they say it's pretty routine.
Right, so.
And if, if I recall, that one was the same size pipe. They weren't expanding it. I mean, that's what I recall in that conversation, the one we just did.
Right, right, right.
The one we just did, yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, there's just, people are, are paying attention to that.
Yeah, good awareness.
Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, which is very well organized, we all know that. But two things are um, a, a little bit new, is they're revisiting their buy-down policy in light of the fact that they have not a, a predictable or very lucrative sources of funding right now besides CPC and ARPA funding. So they're looking at, um, what are the most cost-effective ways to bring more affordable housing online.
Great.
Um, yeah, so that's going to come up in their meetings and with the Concord Housing Development Corporation, and probably will come up again in a roundtable.
Yep.
A housing roundtable. So if you have any opinions about that, be happy to hear that. And the other thing that I noticed is that everything in the pipeline for affordable units, um, we've got Novo, we've got Thurl Residences, we've got Assetback Bloss, we've got potential property at Ninety-one B Main Street, well, something missing. Um, we've got, are all in West Concord.
Mm-hmm.
And some people think that's great, and some people wonder why. So it's just something that I noticed, and I just wonder if it's something we should just think about. It's not up for discussion tonight, it's just, it's all happening in West Concord.
So Mary, um, those two items should be agenda items for the housing roundtable, the next one that we have. And I don't know when that is, but.
I don't either, but I'm sure, um, if Keith isn't listening, I'll bring it up at the, the next Affordable Housing Trust, which is next Tuesday.
I think they're trying for December.
December, yeah.
For the roundtable, the next roundtable, great. So Rich, help me remember, okay?
What'd you say, December ninth?
No, December ninth.
Oh, okay, okay.
Great, good, okay. And that, that's all I have for that. So good. Thank you for the liaison assignments, love, get to hear what's going on. Um, the next item is to look at our calendar. For, um, now till the end of the, um. Disco year, so Town Meeting. Does anybody see any problems with this?
So I just saw one thing, on April fourteenth, that's actually a public hearing for Town Meeting also. So just FYI, that doesn't start till seven, so if we start at six.
Our public hearing?
Yeah, it's our public hearing.
Oh, okay, fine.
Yeah, yeah, just so that, that'll be an hour for us, that's all.
Oh, more than that? The, the public hearing?
No, 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 but I mean, so we start at six.
Oh, yeah.
Public hearings at seven.
That's right, that's right.
So our meeting is going to only be an hour, that.
Right, right, got it.
Or we can come back later.
Yeah, yeah.
We've done that.
Depends how late it is.
Yeah, right. Okay, so Andrea, we've got to remember that, so April fourteenth.
And just, sorry, remind me, when's the Town Meeting?
June second.
Yep.
It's June second.
That's a separate calendar.
So the last one on the, on the calendar is actually the first one.
Yeah, it is the first.
Got, got, okay.
We usually, we usually have a meeting right before Town Meeting for last one that changes any articles.
Got.
Okay, so April fourteenth, uh, again, you heard.
So I'll, I'll be away, um, March thirty-first, but all the other dates look good to me.
Great. Good. I'll be away April twenty-eighth. Mark, you going to be here April twenty-eighth?
I expect so, yeah.
Good. Any, any other issues with this calendar?
I saw.
Kerry, you see, you see any, you don't see any problems with this?
No, I do not.
Great, so I think we need to vote. I vote. Is it the calendar? There's a vote on here, but I don't think we need to. This is our calendar.
Yeah.
We, we need to unmute your mic.
I didn't know I muted it.
I was on my phone call, so.
Oh. I thought we were doing. I can't. Okay, so we accept this, um, calendar. Let's have a vote. Do I have a motion to approve this calendar?
I make a motion that we approve the calendar as distributed in our meeting package.
Second, with the one changed to April fourteenth, right?
Well, it's not a change, it's just a note.
Okay.
Right?
With the note on April fourteenth, great. Okay, good. Second, Terry?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. That was easy, thank you. Next thing is the, um, Mr. Bohm. It's six, it's six fifty-five.
Wow. Pretty amazing.
We are good. Which of these microphones is useful?
Either one.
Either one, okay. Thank you. Um, I'm Paul Bohm, eleven Ridgewood Road, and I'm the Chair of the two-two-two-nine Main Street Advisory Task Force, and I'm representing the task force with a couple of my task force members here today. So this, this evening, and I have a few slides to go through, I'll go through them quickly and we'll have a discussion. Tonight, I'd like to give you a really, a high overview of the recommendation of the task force that we voted on, uh, the other night regarding the property. Um, I want to give you some brief recap of how we got there and what may happen next should you accept the recommendation. Based on the, the multifaceted charge that the select board gave us in March of twenty-twenty-three, we conducted extensive research. And we're really on the home stretch of our work. We're working on a report right now, and we're aiming for a, uh, before-Christmas delivery. It's going to be a Christmas present for you all, hopefully. Cover the next slide, please. So the, the bottom line tonight was that last week we reached the consensus and voted on the recommendation, and the overall recommendation is, is on the screen. And I'll read part of it to you, the rest of it you've probably seen. The two-two-two-nine Main Street, uh, Task Force recommends that the select board move forward on the path towards potential acquisition of the two-two-two-nine Main Street property. In order to both take advantage of the opportunities for meeting the multiple needs of the town, as well as to fully control the use of the property, the task force recommends that, that while final remediation is still underway at the site, that the select board should, uh, go through a number of steps. And I'll, I'll save a little bit more about those, those steps, but there are a couple of steps on the screen here which are important, um, as first steps for the select board, because negotiations are going to be needed. And why we call this a conditional recommendation, um, if you go on the next slide, um, because we can't recommend outright that the property be acquired. There are a series of negotiations that have to take place. There are a number of uncertainties. We, we know what those uncertainties are. We've defined them. And they can only be fully known, uh, through a formal conversation and negotiations with EPA, Department of Justice, Mass DEP, and possibly other parties. Those conversations are geared to finding the best method of acquisition. Of course, the town council is directly involved in all of this. The second piece is, what are the financial terms of the acquisition? What are the costs to acquire? We don't know those for certain. We know sort of what the parameters are around that. The legacy liabilities, we call them the super fund legacy liabilities, those liability protections have to be negotiated. The town has to be protected very robustly and solidly for any past operations or past contamination at the site. The ownership cost, the cost of ownership and development, and the obligations have to be more fully known. We know some of those now, we've estimated some of those. And then finally, uh, insurance coverage has to be sought, and we have to understand that. So those are all sort of conditions on the acquisition. If everything is put into place, if everything is yes, 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 then I think the recommendation would be to acquire the site. So that's why it's conditional. But if these are resolved satisfactorily to the benefit of the town, we think it would constitute a good business decision. We, we're going to, um, talk a little bit more about the good business decision in our report, but, but first and foremost, the property will have great and lasting value to the town. If you wanted to talk more about the business decision, I'd be happy to do that. Next slide, please. Just a little bit on how we came to the, um, the, this recommendation. There, there, of course, there were multiple pieces of the recommendation, but first, we had extensive interviews and research with, with town officials, department managers, developers, and we identified numerous important needs for the town and the public for, for use of the property. Secondly, and importantly, on the safety and health risks, there, we conducted, and the consultant to the town, Rue Associates, conducted a very rigorous independent study. And we've concluded that the, the post-clean-up conditions at the site will meet all state and federal and health, safety standards for human health risks based on the residential reuse criteria. And that will enable most of the site, with very few exceptions, to be used for any and all purposes. The legal issues, with town council's assistance, we have identified all of the important legal pathways and issues that need to be revol, resolved. And we found that there are suitable pathways for the resolution for the benefit of the town. Nothing's guaranteed yet, that has to be negotiated, but we understand what the pathways and issues are. On ownership, we have an understanding of the obligations, responsibilities, and we're confident that the town can become good stewards and managers of the town. And we have put some plans in our report to that, to that end, to help manage the site once it's owned. And importantly, on the cleanup itself, um, we have been following that very closely, and our sister committee, uh, the Main Street Oversight Committee, has been following that. And we're very confident that the site is going to be remediated to residential standards. But that progress has to be monitored and, and confirmed. The site will be turned over to whoever the owner is, the town, only when the site is cleaned up, and EPA will give us paperwork to that end. So, um, that puts us out sort of towards the end of the decade. I'll, I'll speak a little bit more about the timing in a minute. But importantly also, we've had informal conversations with EPA and DOJ staff, and we have the impression that they are very favorable to the town taking ownership, and that will likely lead to some favorable nego, negotiations, we hope. But I think everybody's on the same page here, uh, to reach a, a good conclusion. The next slide, um, you've seen these before, but there are lots of needs for the town and the possible municipal uses, and there's possible private development. And, you know, it's likely that the best combination of municipal uses and private development will be the optimum use of the site. For example, if housing is going to be developed, that's probably going to be with some, uh, negotiations and some, um, um, some conversation with private developers. But clearly, between, um, DPW facilities and conservation trails, active recreation, you've all been out to the site. The site can, is a big property. There's twenty to twenty-five acres of developed land, there's, the rest of that's conservation land with that bog. Uh, so mixing these uses together is going to represent, uh, the really great use of the site. But of course, that takes planning, and one of our recommendations is to begin that planning in parallel with the negotiations. The next slide, and we have developed a, a set of key items, sort of a, a roadmap with the select board's near-term and longer-term considerations. There's a list, um, which is in the next slide, don't show that yet, but it's very, very small print, it's in your handout, that, uh, of next steps to help the select board to plan and budget for the initial processes leading to the acquisition. And those involve legal negotiations, and they involve planning and, and other initial steps. And we have identified key steps between twenty-twenty-five and the time when the site would be available for the actual acquisition, signing of the agreement and development. And we don't anticipate that the, the town would actually enter an agreement till all these knowns are resolved and to the site is cleaned up and, uh, the town has made, um, has an official representation of that. And also, and also in our plan, we have, we will be giving you a, a plan to manage what we call the institutional controls. These are some of the obligations of the town as an owner, not to upset the remediation, that is, you know, the holding base and other pieces of remediation at the site. Those have to be carefully managed. It requires a plan, we've given you a template for that plan. Now, we've given you a template for the risk communication, which we also recommend take place over the next few years. Communications with the public and with the residents, who may or may not have continued concerns as the select board moves down this pathway. So with that, just the last slide, to just to prove that you can't read it on the screen, there are a whole series of recommendations which we've, uh, they're in draft form, uh, we're still talking about timing of some of these. But if you look at these offline, you'll see that on the bottom is the acquisition development of the site. At the first step is to, um, express interest to EPA. Now, why that step is important, EPA has told us that they won't sit down and start negotiating with us until the select board seriously shows an intent and interest in the site. That's a very, um, probably an informal communication, probably with the select board and town council, but it's basically telling EPA, we are interested, let's proceed. That kicks off the, the actual round of negotiations and all the next steps. So my last comment will be, so why start this now? This is twenty-twenty-five, the site's not going to be really ready until twenty-twenty-nine, twenty-thirty. There are several reasons. First of all, negotiations take time. Negotiations, legal negotiation will probably take several years. Uh, planning for the site use, along with other sites and other uses of the town, will take time, will take thought. All this will take budgeting. I can't tell you how many times the Finance Committee has asked me for budget estimates, and I've told them, we have to wait till we actually put some, some meat on, on the bones of the plan. We have a little bit of the cost estimates in there right now for the infrastructure development at the site, but the real costs, and who, and who pays for those costs? Is it the town, or is it with private developers and concert with the town? That really has to be, um, thought out. There's also, um, opportunities to influence the final steps of the cleanup, the grading, the site preparation. That, that was, those will start to occur in twenty-twenty-six, according to EPA. Engagement with private developers and those conversations will take time. So I think, um, this recommendation is really intended to set things in motion, um, for potential acquisition at some point in the future. But we're comfortable that we have identified all the, the issues that need to be resolved.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. I'm going to open it up for questions.
So Paul, two things. So when is the report? Will be December, the final report from the committee?
In December.
Okay.
There is, it's very pieces in draft form.
All right.
We have nine O-authors and, uh, and developing a multi-author report with, not violating open meaning law is really interesting challenge.
Tricky. I, I know. I do know. And then my other question was, you said that the timeline, giving feedback to Maximus, um, on the site preparation was twenty-twenty-six. Can it be more refined? Is it the beginning of twenty-six or the end of twenty-six? I mean, if you think about it, that's a year from January. So it's like, oh my goodness. So I just didn't know if there was any way to refine that at all.
We've been told that the excavation and the soil that's going to.
Yeah.
Come into the property will happen over the next few years.
Yeah.
In fact, the Warner's Pond Task Force is talking to them about possible, not using sediment, but using dirt from disposal areas. Anyway, there's a chain of events.
Yep.
So we believe that's about the timing where we'd have to say, okay, we're thinking of doing this at the site, could you grade it over here? Can you do this over here? I don't have any details on that, but they, they've told us they have to restore the site. That's their cost.
Yep.
And, you know, the, the details of restoration and grading and what trees go where, that, we could have some input into that.
Yeah. No, that's great that it does, just narrowing down that timeline's going to be tricky. Yep. That's it.
Thank you. Cameron, do you have?
Uh, yeah, just, thank you, first of all, Paul. I mean, it's a lot of work, and I can see, a lot of, the team's done a lot of, a lot of great stuff here. Um, just, so if we go into this, just, uh, help me for understanding, is this like, Just, so if we go into this, just help me for understanding, is this like, hey, we expressed something to the EPA, are we then like the sole negotiator? Or is, are they shopping this around saying, hey, well, we'll talk to developers and see if we can like sell it directly to them and, you know, kind of whoever shows up with the biggest check? Or, I mean, how does that process sort of unfold?
First of all, I'm not a fly on the wall in EPA or DOJ. But they are restoring the site, spending $300 million to residential standards with an eye that the town takes ownership on this. EPA in general loves to have municipalities take ownership and develop these sites. That's how they're measured. That's how they measure their success. Having said that, there could be other private developers who express interest. We don't know. There are some high hurdles for potential buyers other than municipalities in terms of lien negotiations, which would be favorably negotiated with us and perhaps not with private developers. So Cameron, I don't know, but I think we are in the, we're in the.
Yeah, we may have some advantages, right? Sure. Okay, no, that's helpful. And then, you know, when we toured the site, they talked about sort of, because you mentioned superfund legacy protections. They sort of talked about like some of the water stuff, like, hey, how long does this have to go on? Hmm, forever. So I just like, I also want us to think about what are sort of the ongoing obligations around, even if the site's cleaned up, that there may be some ongoing things that are required.
Yeah, so it's complicated and it's not a short conversation, but I'll try. The soil remediation and the holding basin, those are going to be done. So when EPA says it's cleaned up, you can put things on the site. But the groundwater remediation will continue for decades, probably. And EPA is responsible for that. They are responsible for what's called O&M, the operation and maintenance of all the remediation systems. Our obligation is to protect those systems so we don't back a truck into a, you know, into a building or we don't, you know, and, you know, exaggerating, but things can happen. But the remediation itself, the long-term remediation is their cost, their responsibility. We are restricted in one of the institutional controls of using that groundwater until it meets drinking water standards, which is probably 30, 40 years in the future. So use of water for drinking at the site probably should not be on the radar screen of the town right now.
I'll let someone else go first on testing that.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, that's really helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, as owners, there are liabilities that we can incur by being negligent, by doing things inappropriately or by developers that we give a ground lease to not doing things properly. So we have to very much control what happens at the site and pass on those obligations to any third party. And so that'll be part of permitting, it'll be part of leasing, you know, a lot. And we fleshed some of that out in one of the chapters in the report.
Great, thanks.
Mark, do you want to go?
Sure. First off, I think it's actually great that we're starting to talk about this now when its appearance on a future capital plan would be in, you know, year five and we can begin to slot it in with other needs. I think that several of the mentioned possible uses are municipal uses. And I think it's important for us to consider the benefits that might accrue to the town for taking advantage of some of those uses to address some of the other issues that are coming up in the land use matrix. I think that when we, it's similar to some of the discussions that we are beginning to have about the MCI Concord property. We know that we have public safety and public works site needs. And I think that it's important for us to really sponsor a very global look at this, to see how these pieces fit together when we, when we consider the, you know, what are the best uses. And I think that it's also possible for us to take some of the, take into account some of the feelings that people might have, to begin to educate them about what are uses for this site and others that people will feel comfortable with. And I think it's a rare opportunity, the other site that we haven't mentioned tonight yet is Peabody. We've got different pieces of property that quite obviously slot into different sorts of uses. And I think if we consider them as a whole and try and come up with a strategy for that, that will result in the best for the town. So, you know, several years to work that out seems like, you know, a good amount of time to do that job the right way.
Yes, I can just comment, it was clear to the task force that planning is really important. It was a little bit out of our scope to recommend multi-site planning. But realistically, you're right, holistic planning, what goes where over time and what's going to be available when and moving things around, freeing up a piece of property that might be more valuable by freeing it up, you know, is part of the equation. So that, the select board will have to figure out how to do that. We will help.
We are working on that. I mean, Megan's putting together the land use matrix that you mentioned in 2229 main is right on there. So you're right, it's going to take time.
This is largely.
I'm not surprised you're way ahead of us.
No.
This is largely an upland site, you know, and we don't get that many when we start to think about resilience and things to have the opportunity to move some things into places where they might be a little bit more protected against, you know, flood zones and things like that is important.
You're right, it's high and dry. Anything else you want to ask or say? You're good?
Yeah, I always, you know, continue to be impressed by the operation there. I think that, you know, maybe if we have some opportunities to open up the site again for some tours, because I, I think when you see it, you start to, that opens up some view of what the possibilities might be in some parts of that site.
Absolutely. That changed my entire opinion when I went out there. It's a whole different world than when you just see. But I do want to make a few comments. Paul and his team have been working really hard and giving a lot of due diligence to these. And when we do get the report, I just want to mention a few things from the table of contents. They did look in Section 8, experiences and examples from other municipalities that have taken over old superfund sites. Section 10, options considered. You know, Paul had to be really brief now, but they've had extensive debates. And one of the options was, you know, don't go down this road. Let somebody, so they've really considered, another one was wait, don't do anything right now. So they've considered, you know, and you want to take a look at all of that and why they chose this option. Important to me, one of the most important is Section 12, as Cameron and Mark just talked about, institutional controls. What is the town going to have to do if we take over this site? And we are going to have to do stuff. We cannot be negligent. So I've been very concerned about that. And the team has just been excellent at really doing some rigorous thinking about that. And so that chapter is really good. So it'll help us plan if we take over this site, what are we going to have to do? What will the town manager have to do? What will her staff do? Which departments are involved? How much will it cost, et cetera, et cetera? So great job by these guys. And I hope everybody on the board and the public reads the report.
I'm going to read every single page of it, for sure. So, and just thanks again to you and the team, because it's been a year of a lot of meetings and a lot of work. And we appreciate the public outreach and the engagement too. And we have a lot of work to do going forward. So thank you.
It's a very talented team, very serious.
Yes.
When I told the bridge, I think 1,000-plus hours have been put into this. I wasn't lying, I added that, it was a lot of work. So we will give you a report that's a page-turner.
That's right.
I have a question.
Yeah, I know.
I have a question. Well, first of all, again, I want to just repeat, thank you. It seems like the amount of anxiety the town had about this has been mitigated quite a bit. The fact that we have a roadmap now as far as what we need to do is really helpful. I guess I'm wondering, what do you see as the future of the task force? Because I know we've got a committee, a standing committee to look at, to make sure that the remediation plan goes according to plan. But I heard you say a lot tonight, the select board's going to have to do this, the select board's going to have to do that.
Well, because they're charged in October 31st. Well, or December 31st or whatever.
Right, exactly.
I think we don't expire till, we don't expire till May of 2026. I think that's, I mean, the report was due the October 31st. But if you look, we were appointed for two years.
Well, I guess this is a question we don't have to answer tonight and you, you know, you're.
We haven't, we haven't talked about that. There is going to be, there is going to be more work to be done, certainly on the planning end of things, certainly on the communication end of things. And, you know, how to, Town Council plays a major role in implementing a lot of, a lot of the important stuff right up front. But I don't know, think about it.
Okay, we need to think about that. So we need to, let me just finish and then I'll get right to you. I see that we have something that we have to do that's really important, that's pivotal as far as we need to send a letter saying that we're serious about moving ahead. We got that, right? And then I think you had some other things there in the small print about things we need to do. But then after that, do you have a suggestion?
Well, I was just going to say that I think when the report actually does drop, if we could prevail on you to have a public session or two, to give people who take the time to read the report, an opportunity to come in and ask their questions and sort of, you know, bat around what they found in it. And I think that would go a long way towards getting the community educated about the contents, because I'm sure that everybody on this board is going to take the time to read it themselves. But some people like to have it presented to them.
Maybe we could have it here and make it an open meeting so people can come here. So we'll have questions after we read it. And that should be maybe even a joint meeting between us and your task force.
So I want to give you time to read it. So, you know, early, early next year?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, you have to write it first, right?
I would still write that letter to EPA whenever you feel comfortable doing that.
I got that.
Because that'll be in there. And, you know, that, as the federal government, things don't happen real fast. But I think they really actually sit down and talk with us.
Yeah, they are.
The other thing I didn't mention.
Do we think we're ready to do that before we see the report? Help me with the timing.
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to think.
No, I think, I think we should keep that in mind. And as soon as we get the report, if we still want to send that letter to the EPA, because Paul's got it outlined here for the first quarter of calendar year 2025, so.
You can read the report by then.
I think we read the report, then send the letter.
That makes sense. Writing the letter is no risk and no investment. Getting Town Council started is an investment. And, you know, I think we've already talked to Megan about budgeting for that. I think you're way ahead of us in that. But, you know, going down this pathway is, there's no risk. You can always say, no, we're not going to require it. You're just incurring costs, legal costs to find, get to that point.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is the next step would be for us to get your report, which we're looking forward to. We'll read it, we'll come back together again, discuss the report with you if we have any questions. We'll vote whether we want to in fact write this letter to the EPA. And then we'll talk about what we need to ensure is in the budget, the FY '26 budget, at least the operating budget for legal.
Legal, and I see mention of planning. I also see both of those things in Q1 of calendar 2025, which is this fiscal year. So we'll have to talk about.
Oh, it's this, this year, you're right.
What kind of funding we might be able to come up with if you want to move forward that quickly.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, the other committee is kind of the backbone of this, the 2229 Oversight Committee. And we really should thank those folks and invite them as well, because they are the watchdogs for Demaximus. So Demaximus seems to be doing a fantastic job. But as laypeople, we don't totally know. But we have a watchdog committee of scientists, Concord citizens, who really comb through all of that detail and are really going over that. And they really deserve our thanks as well.
Let me give you an example of that. I think EPA put out a design for the cap and the holding basin. The Oversight Committee responded, had some concerns with it. That design was changed based on that. So there's, you know, it's not just, it's a feedback that EPA and Demaximus respects and acts on.
Right. So thank you and thank the other members of your committee that are here. Carl, thank you. Court, Rich, anybody else online?
Let's see them.
Thank you.
Okay, well.
Thank you, Paul.
See you in December.
See you. Looking forward to your report. How are we doing for time?
We're about 10 minutes behind.
Pretty good.
Okay, let's talk about the goals, shall we?
This format was really helpful, going through each one. This is great. First I thought, oh, my God, all these pages to read, but no, it was good. It had a lot of detail that was really good.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is to go through this, and I agree, this is a very helpful format. And then before we leave a goal, give some thought to how will we measure or whether we've actually met this goal or not? So let's start.
Before you start, can I just say, just reiterate for the public, I think it was included in the communication, this is sort of an unvetted listing from maybe about half of the departments that have responded to the request to send in information. So over the next two to three weeks, we will hear from all of the departments. We'll go through and clean this up. But I just wanted to give you a sense of the types of things that, I mean, there's a lot of work that departments are already doing and planned on doing, and just so you could see what that is.
I'm glad you brought that up, because what I heard tonight, when Wendy was giving her liaison report about the school committee, you know, I'm thinking, we should be doing this more often. So let's go with what we got tonight and then we'll put it on the agenda for maybe the end of next quarter, you know, when you've got more input and we've made more progress. So we can make this something that we do regularly.
But this is the first time that the Select Board goals, since I've been on the board anyway, have been tied specifically to department tasks and obstacles and Select Board tasks. It's really useful.
So our very first goal is to establish goals that align and integrate between Select Board, Town Boards, Committees, Staffs, and Town Departments. I think that's what we're doing here tonight. Anybody have any comments of what's written here as far as potential obstacles?
How did the merit pay initiative specifically fit into this? Why was that one called, called out here?
Well, what I will say is, it's unvetted. We, you know, we asked departments to respond and this is, this is how this was presented. So I think the thought here is that, you know, in alignment with the way my performance is evaluated, that it's tied to goals. The merit pay program that we are rolling out for non-union employees is tied to performance of goals.
You know, Mary, when I was thinking about this, it's the whole issue of timing, to me, starts coming up and it sort of begs that question of, when do we do the goals? And I'm wondering if one of our goals ought to be, figure out when we should set our goals, which is new, it wasn't in our goals, but maybe that's a more important thing for us to discuss and maybe not now, but we can think about it, about how to really align that.
We started talking about that last week.
We should make it a goal.
But Mark, you know, Mark talked about doing it in the fall, right?
What's around the budget.
It's fall. Maybe we're doing it now and we'll get on that cycle, I don't know.
Yeah, we're doing it because we can. But I do think that what we should start to do is think through the whole cycle, figure out when things can get done, because it's the same calendar problem every year. And the sooner that we sort of align that, the, there's always going to be a little bit of an offset between, I think, the fiscal year and the ability to close out and recognize what actually occurred then. And so we might as well just admit that and live with it somehow. And if we can come up with a cycle that fits well with the budgeting cycle, that's great.
Right, so we talked about this last week and you suggested that. And now here we are, that if we, this is October, this is fall, maybe this is the right cycle to do it.
I think the problem for me is, we're putting, we're looking at, right now, we're revising FY '25 goals for, we've already got the FY '25 budget, right? So if we wait until the fall to do, what are you saying, we wait until the fall to do the following year's goals?
Well, until we have more knowledge of what the operating budget is and so Carrie has a sense of her staffing and what she's putting her budget, then it would align better.
But that would be FY '26. So we'd be doing FY '26 now.
So I'm just saying, now, let's think about what the timeline should be. Just plan it out. I'm not saying do anything, but one of our goals could be to figure out what the plan should be.
Okay, let's put that aside, we'll put that in the parking lot for now.
We could add that as SB task under number one.
Yeah, under Select Board Task.
Establish an annual cycle, you know, that is full circle. And leave it at that and figure out what that means. But, okay. I had a comment on the second one, just noting that I think it's great that we're coordinating with the school committees and the Finance Committee. That's good. I'm feeling that particularly, you know, Planning Board coordination around MBTA zoning, NRC coordination around Warner's Pond, I think there are other boards and committees that we need to, need to have those kinds of things. The roundtable approach to climate action goals. So I feel like there's something that's getting established there that's a little bit broader than that. I don't have any problem with what's in there, I just think that we may have other.
Going forward. Going forward, right. But as far as this goal that we adopted in June.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think, and I think as far as how are we going to measure it, we're going to measure it because we have, we're going to have three meetings. I think we're in good shape with this, this goal, actually, right? we're going to have three meetings. I think we're in good shape with this, this goal, actually, right?
Right.
We've got a meeting in August. We're going to have one in November and December. Okay, next one, recommit to annual capital budgeting process, dah, 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 dah. Again, well, we'll see, but I think we're, we've made really good, we've made a good start to having this done. Right?
Yeah.
We're good?
Maybe we do a lessons learned at the end of it, right? But that's, it's all good.
Yeah. So, I think this is, this, I think we should-
Okay, wait a minute. Back to number one, we didn't really evaluate, how to evaluate that, but tied in with that. Maybe another Select Board task is to take a look at this quarterly or monthly, like, like we were just talking. Yeah, then we should write that down in here.
Yeah, so if we periodically review how we're doing against that, and then figure out this cycle that we're talking about, and then we're not late on the cycle?
Right.
Right.
Every year?
So, what do you think, quarterly, monthly, or?
Monthly's too much.
Okay, let's write down quarterly.
I think quarterly's good, and I think we need-
What do you think, Carrie? Quarterly enough?
I think quarterly is good. Monthly seems like it would be a lot of work.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, next thing. Periodic topical forums such as housing, sustainability, planning, arts and culture. So, we're going to read what's written here. How do you think we're doing here?
I think what's most important about these kinds of forums is that they create opportunities for these multiple groups to collaborate with each other, so that it doesn't become, everything has to go up to the- top and, and come back down. And so, I, I feel like that makes good use of things like task forces, which we're getting good mileage from as well.
I, I think we're doing a pretty good job here. I mean, housing has quarterly forums, sustainability is having one. I mean, it's all written here. Planning, we're going to be doing some more, I think, after the new year. And arts and culture, well, we had a roundtable, and there wasn't a lot of enthusiasm for the next one.
No, there wasn't.
So, this isn't something we should force on people, so.
Yeah, if we have too many of them, we'll have a attendance problem.
Yes.
Because we also have other forums for, for example, for 2229, Main Street, there were some.
And the Study-
Transportation, right. I know, so we've got a lot of things going on, and people, we don't want to burn people out.
You know, I personally think we're in good shape here.
Yep, I'd agree.
Yeah, okay.
Next, we're looking at training. We did the ethics training, which was excellent. And we've got a schedule for procurement training and open meeting law training.
Good.
Yeah, didn't know about them, that's good.
What about DEI training? Did we do that? Should we do some, what about that?
Yeah, I, I did not put that on the list. I know it's something that you've asked for.
Yeah.
And we certainly could add that. I think we have a, you know, we have a small window. We're pretty much done for extra stuff this year.
Yep.
And then I think we have a couple of months at the beginning of 2025, and then we need to pause, and then we're kind of done for the-
Yeah.
Okay, so what do people think? You think this is enough realistically to expect?
We certainly can change some of these out if there is a strong interest in, in doing another topic.
What's muni law training?
Well, I mean, there was ethics and sexual harassment. I felt like muni law was going to just cover that, those topics.
Maybe the DEI could be scheduled for, you know, September next year or something, you know, or the, as soon as you can have another one of these, which is, I don't know when that would be. June is, you know, May, June, July, August, they're all busy, or maybe September.
We also historically have had a training session with the town clerk. I think maybe the chair of the Select Board has participated. I, I think that's very general facilitating meetings.
Well, basically, what they did, though, was the ethics and the open meeting law, and then the last half hour was on facilitating meetings, so, you know.
So, I'm happy to take suggestions on, on what you would like to do.
Yeah, what about, do, why procurement training?
Well, that was specifically mentioned.
Was it?
It's, it's, yes, in, in your action item. It doesn't have to be that. I think that would be the one that we would be ready to do first. I do think it would be helpful, given the number of questions that we have been asked recently about procurement, the number of public records requests on procurement. It might be helpful for there to be some, some more understanding of, of the procurement process and state law.
Okay, so I think this is a full plate.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, how do we help with this? Or, just to publicize it and show up?
Yes.
Great, let's keep going. Improve Select Board processes, ensure good governance, possibly utilize data, consider different viewpoints, delay decisions from where possible to enable community. This is very abstract to me, so I really don't know how to make, how to measure how well we're doing here. I'm open to ideas.
Well, when I read this one, this is about, there's a comment here about utilize data to make decisions. That's just about how we make decisions, right? I don't know if it's an action or it's just how we evaluate things and make decisions. And the delay decisions for one meeting whenever possible, I think that's the concept of have a discussion about it and vote on it in the next meeting.
Right.
So, that, I think, is something that might, we want, might want to talk more about, because it's going to, it has implications.
Well, we, I think we've been doing that, haven't we, or haven't we?
Have we always?
Well, sometimes we do that, like tonight with the letter to the EPA, with appointments. We have that system where we nominate, and then the next one we appoint. We can't always delay the decision. Sometimes there's an urgency.
But if we can.
I think ARPA, Carrie said, "Next time, bring in your suggestions." We're going to do ARPA. So, I think generally, we might be doing that.
I'm in, I'm free. I think it's good. I just didn't know if it's explicit, like every time we'll have a discussion, always vote in the next meeting.
I don't think we can do that.
We can, for some time.
Well, if I forget that, and I try to rush for a vote, remind me.
All right, okay.
Okay, that, that there's no, it's not time sensitive. Let it percolate, and we can vote on it, because I'm the one who usually calls for a vote, and, so just remind me. I have no problem with that.
I think there are ways that the agenda format could be improved, to make it clear to the public that this, you know, I've worked places, different form of-
Purpose of the, this is, is this going to a vote, or is this information?
Yeah.
Yeah, generally, you use that, discuss versus vote.
Right. Another really good example is the real estate tax exemption.
Well, I was going to say.
Yeah, we had that hearing, and we don't take the vote till November, so we're getting some community input. So, I think that's a good process.
But, you know, just talking out loud, so we're voting November 18th, we're going to do the review, but should we vote on that same day, or should we hear the presentation in advance?
No, we, we are-
We have to vote.
I got it. I'm just saying, sometimes it's information that's presented, and we should make sure we get as much information in advance, so we're not being asked to make a great decision.
Yes, that's true.
So, something that's that critical to the community, we ought to think about the information we're going to get in advance, and then make sure that we've thought it all through and make a decision.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. That happened last year. There was some information came in that night in handouts. And, yeah, that doesn't work for me. I need to read it in advance and think, think it through.
Yeah, just something to think about. So, this is all about how we make decisions and process.
And then the consider different viewpoints, yeah. I feel like it's up to each person to make sure that they articulate their viewpoint, even if it's the minority viewpoint. And we respect minority viewpoints. I mean, I think I was at a League of Women Voters forum recently, and I was actually saying that I thought we had a good board, because we have a diversity of opinions, and that makes better decisions.
Mm-hmm.
And it does, so.
Well, as chair, too, you call on each person. That's good.
Right.
So, that's good process.
So, I, I think we're in good shape here. Am I wrong?
I think we're following good practices.
Yeah, I think, so, I don't have any changes to what's on the page. What's been a little bit going through my mind is just kind of stepping back a little bit and keeping effective and transparent governance, right?
Yep.
So, how do we make sure, and I don't know that this means we need to write anything more down, but maybe I'm just putting it out for discussion, right? So, how do we make sure that we have, like, sort of, I think about the through lines, like, to the town senior management team, right? Like, how are we articulating, I mean, maybe Carrie, you are, but like, us as the Select Board, like, do we want to go meet with them and talk about, like, "Hey, you know what? Let's get the team together here. Here's what our Select Board goals are. What's your feedback?" You know, same with kind of like the school committee, the finance committee. Yes, we're having the joint meetings, which is great, right, and it's definitely helpful. Right, it's a start. But, but what do we do to say, "Hey, look, you know what? Here are our goal. Let's talk about what our goals are." How does that, you know, how do you react to that? How does that fit with what you're trying to do? So, I mean, I don't know that it's, I'm not sure what else I would write down, but I think we have to think about, like, in any organization, no matter how much you think you're communicating, you're communicating like a third as much as people actually want, you know what I mean? So, they always want to know more, like, "What's going on?" Like, "Oh, wait a second. Oh, I heard this," or "I thought that," right? So, just if there's ways that we can sort of, you know, be able to sort of reach out to that, because there's a lot of, like, other sort of senior people in this, on these committees or in the town leadership, how do we make sure that we're sort of, you know, that they're, we're communicating what, what we're trying to accomplish to them?
I'm going to push back on that. I think, I, I think you're right. We have a responsibility to communicate. I think we are. But also, citizens have a responsibility to make themselves informed.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so, we can only, we can only do so much.
Yep.
I mean, like, how many people are at this meeting? But, and thank you for being here.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you know what I'm saying?
No, I, I absolutely do. I absolutely do. It's, it's not easy. I'm just saying, like, where, where we can sort of get to the sort of next level of, of folks or, or conversations. I know you can't sort of, you know, go have coffee with every person in the town, right? But, 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 you know, what can, it's just to, for us to keep thinking about, like, hey, when we sort of talk about, how are we making sure that that is resonating through the town leadership, the school committee, the finance committee? Like, just how does it sort of, you know, get, get out there?
I think the town study meeting, the town meeting study committee is doing a lot of the work in this direction as far as looking at the town meetings specifically, right? So, if we could broaden some of that to other things. I think we're all going there, but.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Well, I think maybe the Select Board goals should be posted on the website.
Already there.
Okay, okay, but possibly along with the final version of this. I'm not sure what you think about it. Well, this should be on there.
Well, it's in the packet, right?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
So, it's, it's adorable. Everything, everything's-
No one knows how to find that. The only other comment I'll make, Mary, is that we as Select Board, as the Select Board, and all our committees, it's our job to communicate those goals, and we're in fact, Sam, and to cross-communicate, like, this team's working on that, though, transportation, whatever.
That's a good point.
That's right.
I mean, I try to do that to a degree that-
That's a good reminder. Yeah, yeah, as opposed to just listening and bringing it back. That's a great reminder.
Let's put that down for Select Board tasks and liaisons, because I think there's a lot of silos, and we've been doing some really good work on breaking down the silos, and we should continue to do that. Like you said, cross, you know, team.
Yeah, where you can collaborate across committees.
Yeah, exactly.
But also make sure that, you know, if the committee's working on something that's part of the goal, or is there something related to it?
So, we may come up with something when we look at the liaison feedback.
Oh, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we pick that up when we get there?
Yeah, great.
The best town flag policy, definitely going to happen.
Yep, it is. If not next meeting, the next one. Right?
Right.
Yep.
Okay, good. We can turn the page on that one.
Yes.
Okay, engage the community legislation, legislative delegation, state agencies, robust planning, dah, 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 dah. Okay, this is all about MCI.
Yes, so we're moving to land use opportunities, right? Yes.
We are, yes, yes, we are. If you had asked me a few weeks ago about MCI, I, I would have hesitated, but I really do think we're getting to work and making progress. I really do. What do you think, Mark?
Yeah. So, my reaction to this was, and I use kind of a coding scheme that I'm now needing to decode. I thought that the agree, that the, under the second post, I'm looking at the bulletized version, the agreement between the town and the state that outlines the disposition process. It seems to me that we are, and this question, by the way, came up from the MCI advisory board today, as to whether or not we need to revisit their charge in any way, shape, or form. So, I promised that I would reread the charge and see whether there's been any divergence that we might want to address. But specifically, I think when we wrote this, we didn't have as much of an understanding of what the roadmap and the process was likely to be. So, when we put, when we said we were seeking agreements between the town and the state that outlines the disposition process of the land area, that, that doesn't feel quite where we're going. I think what we're, what we are doing is we're laying down the roadmap for how we're going to get there, and we now understand more about that process. And so, being able to communicate clearly what the process is and where we are on it, a lot of the timeline that the advisory board is, is, is developing is a more appropriate output, I think, than, than aiming towards an agreement. That said, I, I don't have, you know, I'm not finally objecting to this language, but that's, that was how it struck me when I reread this, you know.
So, I think you're agreeing with that we want to consider rewriting their charge.
Yeah, well, we, or we might want to consider revising the language that we're using on our goal from agreements to, to a process and roadmap is established. So, we've got, it's basically more of a plan than an agreement.
Okay.
For, if we're talking about FY25, certainly in the future, there's an agreement, but we're not-
Got it, got it.
I agree.
Yet.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're saying, in our goals here, we want to change the, the first bullet.
Yeah.
Got it.
Well, right, and if you look at, in the packet on page 48, where it's kind of a bullet list, it's that first dark bullet under section two. I called it 211. I love numbered lists for that reason, bulleted lists.
And what's your new wording, Mark?
Roadmap or process, you know, a plan, basically, rather than agreement.
Okay, plan.
Striking out agreement.
Yeah, you, you said process and roadmap is established, which I really, I really liked.
Yes.
Okay.
Good, yeah, that is good. Okay, anything else?
That was my comment on that section.
Okay. So, how will we know we've completed it? When we have a process and a roadmap?
Yeah, and we'll have, you know, and that will include, include a budget and a timeline.
Great.
That, that's well publicized.
Are we ready to move on to 2229, May? Okay, utilize the expertise of the task force to determine next steps for the 46-acre parcel. We've got all of the work that the town manager's office is doing, CMLP. Shouldn't, well, Carrie, as you, as this gets more and more input from town staff, you'll have more input on this and DPLM for these, right?
Yeah. So, now we heard tonight, under Select Board tasks, that we might be writing this letter, we might be authorizing town council, and there might be some budget work to do. Oh, well, no, the budget's already here on the list, so maybe two Select Board tasks.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically, we're not really considering voting. We're going to vote on the recommendation and, and then take whatever corresponding actions come out of that, right?
And then letter to EPA and-
And Q1, just Q1 actions, related actions, I mean.
Authorized town council, that's what it was.
Right. And then find out if we have the money.
Well, that one's already actually in the- Well, that one's already actually in the PMO up there.
Identify legal budget, that would be great, perfect.
Okay.
Very good. Okay. Oh, rotary, Route 2 rotary improvements. I think we've got three different people working on this in town.
Do we? Because I'm kind of curious, I don't know, I don't know how this is happening, this is one of my questions. Who is running with this? I know it's part of MCI.
Mm-hmm.
It's part of MCI, I know we've got ARPA money for DPW to work on it, right? Is that right?
Yeah, Public Works and the PWC.
But the, but that's through StanTech, right? That's, is that the same one?
Yes. To evaluate, yeah, the safety quarter, but the rotary? So is MCI in trying to discuss with DOT advancing rotary design?
Yes.
They are?
So we're, we're trying to figure out who's, who's redoing the Route 2 corridor study and what stage they're at, this traffic survey that they issued. We're also trying to figure out who that is and as well as understand what the scope of the StanTech work is with Public Works. So it seems to me that there's a collaboration that needs to happen and the Transportation Advisory Committee needs to be in there, but the, the legal and government subgroup of MCI has taken on sorting that out to figure out who's on first so that we can actually, you know, speak about what is really happening.
Okay, great.
So does that subcommittee want to meet with Transportation Advisory Committee or not yet, or?
I think we've got too many cooks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. So each, each has an interest of, you know, there's, so the first step is to find out who's doing what, and the second step is to try and organize that.
Right.
And exactly whose banner that gets organized under, I think is TBD, but, you know, we know that we need to address the, have an understanding of where the state's going from a transportation perspective in order to plan MCI. So we need to figure out when we're going to get that input.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
It seems like TAC and DPW are working well together.
Sometimes, yeah. Pretty, pretty good.
I'm trying to figure out how to get to the MCI advisory board, the information they need to do the work they're doing without them having to do the work. And, so we've got three groups here at play, right?
Yeah.
So... I'm looking, I'm trying to figure out who should be the lead, right? We can't have three groups going to DOT.
Right.
Will look bad.
Right.
So we need someone to take the lead and I'm, and I'm open to suggestions of who that should be. And whoever does take that lead would bring the information back to MCI to say, here's, here's what we know and here's what the conversations are around Route 2 and how they impact the redevelopment of the MCI parcel. So I'm open.
Well, from my perspective, it should be, Public Works should take the lead.
Okay.
As the, as the group working with all of the individual groups.
Okay. Is there a person?
Well, I, I think through the Public Works staff.
Okay.
So through the director.
So we heard the town engineer.
What?
We heard the town engineer, that's where we were starting.
Yeah, that's what I've heard.
So I, I would suggest through, through the director, who is Alan Cathcart, who can then assign staff.
And then TAC would have input into that as well?
Well, I'm wondering if it might be easiest if someone from the MCI subcommittee and the chair of TAC, each contact Steve Ducrene or whoever Alan tells them to contact and they can work out how they're going to do it.
So I, I can confirm that the MCI advisory board has already reached out to Director Cathcart.
Great, okay.
Who is aware of, of the request. And I, I would just ask, this, this project has been going on for a long time. It's bigger than just the MCI
Right.
property. Board and committee members change, and so if, if we could start with the staff.
Right.
Who can then help to coordinate a multi-committee group board meeting.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And you're right, it is bigger than MCI. It's, it's bigger than the rotary. It's the whole corridor, right?
Right.
I guess my only concern there, Carrie, is the timing. Is the timing. That I want... By timing, I mean the, the parallel efforts and how are we going to... If the MCI advisory board needs information in order to make recommendations about their reuse, you know, and they're waiting to find out what does the plan look like for the rotary, how do we make sure that these two things are kind of going concurrently?
So the additional scope of work to look at the rotary, that, that contract amendment was either just processed or it's in, it's in process, so that work will start imminently.
Okay.
You know, within the next several weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, and what we're trying to do on the MCI board is, is to identify a list of questions that we need the answers to. For example, one question that was mentioned today was just in terms of whatever the DOT is planning with, with Route 2, there's some limit to their area of work. And outside of that would be where we might be able to put an access road into the site because we'd be outside of their scope. So we're trying to understand what their design, and so we have questions that, that pertain to the site that maybe DOT can answer, so we're committed to getting those questions written down so that we can hopefully get those answers through the, through the transportation groups that we're contacting that we have.
Public Works.
Yeah, we're hoping that at some point they will, you know, gain to come and talk to us a little bit about, you know, so that there's a general overview, but we're also looking for some specific answers.
And similarly, TAC had some concerns about anything that's done at the rotary is going to affect traffic in West Concord.
Yes.
So they have some specifics on that that they want to communicate.
Okay, so I think, I think we've agreed that it will be DPW that will take the lead and get input and periodic, periodic updates and feedback to these other groups, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Okay, I'm going out to municipal land uses. Great, so we, Terry and I put together a very simplified land use matrix. We've been talking about this for a while and I, Megan, do you want to talk about that? About whether you think that's doable and the timeline and things like that?
Sure, thank you. So, so as Mary said, Mary and Terry sent me a spreadsheet and it's really kind of refining all of the problems and opportunities to what are the priority, top priority at this time, problems and opportunities. And so that is the public safety, home for a public safety campus and home for a public works campus. I think there's a tour that this, this body went on with the finance committee.
Yep.
And there's been multiple discussions about the conditions of those facilities and the need to find new homes for them and to start planning in the capital budget. So the, the hope for this presentation, it's been tentatively scheduled for December 16th, is to talk through some of the pros and cons to those two areas, to those two programs and potential options for where they could be located. There, I think I've mentioned before, there was a lot of work done in a 2020 facility study that not only looked at the existing buildings, but also the programs at that time and the square footage needed for garage space and office space with that staffing level of, of the 2020 level, which is still good information that can be used. There's also some additional information that needs to be collected through my work with some of the senior management team, like what are the response time requirements? When we're thinking about public safety and the two locations across town, what would work logistically? So I am planning to present some of those high-level findings, probably not perfect solutions, but just kind of where we are at that meeting.
Great, it'll be...
I, I also want to mention too that I put in a bullet here, we, we are, we did post for a community development director position as a new addition to the senior management team. It is using an existing full-time employee position that we had and I, that, that has just been posted and I think it's going to really help add to the bandwidth of, of senior management staff and so be able to help me spend more time on projects like this and others.
Great. Very good, good.
So sorry, is that, that's replacing an existing role?
Yeah, this is, there was a reorganization a couple of years ago when I was hired, I don't know, Carrie, if you want to speak to that, but it's, there was, there was a former land use director and when I was hired, I took over that, those responsibilities along with being the deputy town manager and to add capacity, I thought I could, you know, maybe add a different planner to supplement the staff. And we looked into that, we looked into hiring a transportation planner, there was a recruitment effort, we were unsuccessful at hiring a transportation planner. And then with some of these kind of high-level strategic planning initiatives, the decision was made to move forward with hiring that community development director position. Used to be DPLM, that's why I'm hesitating there. It's kind of a rebrand. Community development is a common department name in a lot of communities across the Commonwealth and we call it planning and land management here, but we're planning to shift that.
So would they become like involved in, in all this, like MCI and PBD and?
I see them participating
229 main.
Yeah, I mean, not taking, I mean, I think there'll be a discussion about skill sets and, and the applicant pool that we have, but just adding another person to assist with some of these major priorities.
I think that, I think it's great to start with the 2020 facilities study and the, and the program deficiencies that were there and obviously prioritizing public safety and, and public works since those were the things that came up highest in terms of needs there. But I think that at this stage of the game, we have such an unprecedented potential opportunity to, to solve the, the land, the space and office needs of, of the municipality because we, you know, in the time that I've been here, I don't think we've ever had as many possible contributing, contributions to the solution as we do now with the, with the, the elementary school with MCI.
Yeah.
With 229 main. And those are going to come online in, you know, over the span of a decade, really. So I would really encourage at the town level to, to look deeper into the efficiencies that, that might be, might be available. We, we often talk about trying to find ways to, to, to gather some efficiencies and, and to cut costs and it's always seemed to me that, you know, the fact that the town operates out of something...
14.
14, yeah, I, I don't want to exaggerate. You know, and I'm not sure that it's only 14, but let's call it 14 for now. Different locations, that, you know, certainly, supporting it from an IT perspective was a challenge and, and those, that, that's also a number of potential other properties that could then go into the mix and become solutions and maybe a number of those I would note are not in West Concord.
Thank you.
So reuse of those could, could create opportunities. So I think that alongside of public safety and, and DPW, we need to look at that, that opportunity as well when we...
I appreciate that feedback, Mark.
I think what I'm hearing you say is that when we look at the land matrix, don't just limit it to DPW and public safety, right? Maybe a third column would be consolidated town.
I mean, you know...
And maybe a fourth column would be, if we even were beyond municipal needs, housing, then it'd be commercial.
Right.
We could expand it, but let's keep that and...
As a, for example, there's a virtual diaspora of people who used to have an office in the town. So, you know, if you look at assessing used to be here, HR used to be here.
A lot more head counting, too.
Yeah, and that's, so what happens is they, you know, it's musical chairs, somebody has to lose a seat to get a seat and, and that creates one more level of potential disconnect.
I hear you. We'll talk about that when we do the land matrix.
Good.
Okay, we've got to move along a little bit faster than we've been doing because we, I, I was, I was a little bit concerned about this. We're onto the zoning bylaw, I think, under town infrastructure and planning. And I had a very ambitious...
There's no audio on Zoom.
Oh, really?
Uh-oh.
Okay, we can hear you.
I think somebody muted, there we go. Now you can hear us.
Can you hear us now?
That's perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, what are we doing around parking? Can somebody just, so we're looking at...
So we, I'm trying to read what's here. I mean, we do have a consultant there, we're going to coordinate with the planning board and division and look at new regulations and exhibits related to parking, including joint parking facilities, relief from parking requirements and parking dimensions. That was the goal that was put together by the planning board.
So, so what does, what does that mean? What is the goal in?
Well, it's a zoning requirement, so they're looking at the existing zoning bylaw related to parking.
To try to ease up on requirements or, or, or prevent congestion?
To evaluate it and make sure it's more consistent with industry standards and try to address some of the concerns that originally were raised by the Economic Vitality Committee, but I think that was the intention.
Mm-hmm.
They haven't done their reporting yet, it's going to happen this month around some of the work they've been doing with the consultant, but that was the goal.
Because, I'm a little bit confused because it says that they'll move forward with an amendment at the 2025 town meeting, but then it doesn't include any analysis of public parking or public parking policies. So I don't know what's...
I think that has to do with how many parking spaces are required for certain...
Yeah, it's more so, it's the...
Right, isn't that in industry practice then?
Well, there has been, but there's also evolving thought that, you know, things are changing and maybe fewer. I don't see this as being something that, that needs a specific action on our part unless we're asked just to move us to the next thing.
Yeah, you know, you're right, this is a planning board item.
Yes.
We do have 26 goals, so if we can eliminate any of them, that's great.
I'm reluctant to do that because I thought this was important for the Economic Vitality Committee.
And I would like, encourage them to tell us how we can help.
Okay.
Okay, and, and economic vitality, what is their goal with this?
Their, their, their goal is to ease parking requirements in business districts so that we have, they become more attractive when they go, when they become vacant.
Right, okay.
So it's harder to get...
I get it.
Right, so that was, that was the goal, so, okay, that's well said. I think we need to, I need, I need to take that back to the Economic Vitality Committee. Okay, we can remove this.
So we're removing it?
I am, I'm okay with removing that. Well, am I...
Okay, I'm just, it's one of our goals, I'm just, it's, well, I think, I mean, it's worked.
I think it's okay if it happens, I just don't think that we have a specific task that we need to...
But we're monitoring it, right? So...
I mean, it, it's something that you flagged as a need based on feedback from one of your committees.
Right.
You identified this as work for the planning board.
Right.
I mean, that's, you've done, you've, you've done what, what you can do. I don't think you remove it.
Okay.
I don't either. I'm going to continue to monitor it and make sure that they're trying to address it.
Yeah, yeah, right, let's keep, just monitor this.
Okay, Warner's Point, I'm going, again, I'm going to move this quickly. Warner's Point, I think we're in good shape with Warner's Point, I do.
Yeah, I think that a general comment is, is that the, the, you know, meeting with the NRC to review their recommendations and define and confirm the community validation of whatever direction they, they take, so...
What kind of timeframe are we talking about? Before town meeting or after?
Before town meeting, but not necessarily for town meeting.
Okay.
So you're thinking that the NRC will want our input?
So the, the Warner's Point task force is, is a, is a task force of the NRC, it will make a recommendation to the NRC.
Right.
And then I think our role is to engage when the NRC is thinking about either sponsoring that recommendation or modifying it in some way to make sure that A, there's been plenty of community input, which I, I have every confidence there will be.
Yep.
And B, that, you know, that we are looking at how that, you know, that we, that we agree with that recommendation as well and, and whatever the implications are of it for, for the town. Because there's, there's three options, just to remind, there are two of them are capitals and one of them is not. So we, we just need to, when it comes back to the NRC, we need to review that and make sure there's been plenty of community input.
I think when it comes time for articles on the town meeting warrant that has spending from one of the different alternatives, then we will definitely have a say. But for now, it's, it's in the NRC's court.
Yes.
Right? So it's kind of like what we just talked about with parking. It's in the planning board's court.
Right, so we will receive and review the task force's recommendation once complete.
Okay. West Concord master plan. Um, I think the problem is here is funding.
So, yeah, but I would also, I, I think we should, the, the description of what's in here for land management, that should be our goal. Because originally there was some expectation that maybe the MCI funding might help advance sort of a, a more formal study of West Concord, but I think that's not realistic. And so what's been described as what we're doing should, should just be the goal. Just update from the twenty-ten. So in West Concord, it says master plan, right? But what the West Concord Advisory Committee is doing right now is going back to the twenty-ten study and just updating it and saying, did we do what we said we were going to do or did we not? What's the status? And just do that and stop.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I agree with that.
That's what they're giving to MCI. And, you know, until we know more about what's happening with MCI and all these other planning.
Right, I totally agree with that. I think when we get a strategic plan from one group, that it's, how does it fit in the others? It's, we need, we need an overall plan first. So, so I think that's great. Let's update what we've already got.
That's good.
Okay.
So any action we need to take? So the.
No, make sure it happens.
Monitor and receive.
Update to existing plan three. Okay, next one. Climate, oh, God, climate action.
This one's similar to me. Like, I don't think the goal should be create the whole new plan. I think what we need to do is go back to all the details that we have and just say, what have we done?
Yes.
And document it, right?
Totally agree.
Which will position us for.
Eric.
Well, Eric, it's the whole climate action committee, too. They've started a process of going through.
Well, what have we done? But it also seems like, and what goals are we establishing for the next?
Well, so then that's getting into, are we going to reevaluate the whole plan? And I think, I don't know, I don't want to speak for Eric, but I, I think the assumption is that we might need more resources to actually formally put through the next five-year plan because this plan will be, will need to be updated. And so if we want this, the plan that we have now is, is a nice document. It's online. It's dynamic. Like, if we're going to go forward and do that much work, I don't think A, it's not funded for this year, right? So maybe the climate action committee can have some input about whether it should, something should be funded, but I'm also fearful that that could be a lot of money.
Yeah, I, I think for all these plans, before we fund new things, we should go back and update and figure out what have we already done and what didn't we do and why not? And then we can decide whether to seek more funding.
Yep, so this is the same as updating.
That's what's in West Concord.
Right, but this is.
And also how do they fit in with all the other silos? Because there's too many strategic plans floating around.
We use that word a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, the next one is town infrastructure, cell phone, I think.
Yeah, we've got that.
We've got that covered. Um, road maintenance, funding and improvements, I think we're.
Working on it, right?
We are. I like that. Road commissioners.
You are road commissioners.
We are road commissioners.
You're in charge of the right-of-way.
That's right. We're road commissioners. Good, I need another badge. Okay. Um, oh, increased revenue generation.
So can, before you go on, there's a goal that's missing here.
What is it?
In our printed goals, we had ensure progress on major projects. And the bullets were sustainable plans for electric, water, sewer, and then town capital projects.
What number is that?
It's not in the plan. It's on this, it's in our printed document.
Yeah, yeah, I'm like lost.
Oh, God, Wendy.
Take action to improve town.
We need to find that.
I'm just, it's common. We should update it later.
Okay, we'll do that next round.
Yeah, next round.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, to that, increased revenue generation, pursue pilot agreements. We're making great progress at that. We really are. I think we're, we're going to come back to the slipboard on November fourth.
Oh, November fourth, okay.
November fourth, draft policy.
Go ahead.
November fourth, great.
Yes.
Yep, good. We're doing, evaluate town and properties for possible reuse disposition. I think we've narrowed this down to, um, PBD and Harrington House. Yeah? Good. Do you think we should expand it?
Well, that was kind of the point of what I was talking about before, which is land is matrix.
Oh, to look at all town.
All facilities.
Right.
I mean, it's good that there are some that are sort of open and vacant, but the question is which ones should be open and vacant.
Okay, I, I look, I heard it differently. I heard it, should we? Yeah, it's a lot more complicated than I heard it originally.
Okay. Just a thought. I don't have any problem with what's written down here. I just think we can build on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think these are good. I think to the extent that there's something more creative when we look at the whole picture, we also shouldn't, uh, close that off from any sort of, you know, consideration.
There's always the opportunity to achieve something that you didn't expect to achieve.
Right, right.
We're on purpose.
Update too.
Right.
Okay, the last one here, support, support Concord Business Community to enhance local receipts.
Hands are a little tied with this, okay?
Well, we talked about, we talked about, I think at our last meeting about, um, having some kind of a discussion about commercial development because it came up so much at the RTE forum. And then Carrie had some really good ideas about how we could, um, you know, frame that conversation, what's available, what's vacant. So we're still kind of rashing that out or discussing that in, with Mimi, Granny, Megan. And, um, we'll find out what the next step is. So I think the good news is we're working on this and the task, what is, how do we measure success that we've got?
Well, we have, presumably we would have some project ideas that would, that would accomplish something along those lines by the end of the year.
I'd like to, I'd like to, um, connect it with local receipts because it's measurable. But maybe that might be too narrow. I mean, we wrote it, uh, support Concord Business Community to enhance local receipts. So we put local receipts there.
What do you mean by local receipts? You mean, you mean taxes?
Yeah.
Because local receipts means something different.
Oh, it does, wasn't it?
Well, it's like user fees and stuff.
Real taxes.
Oh, no, yeah, I mean.
You mean revenue?
I don't mean.
You mean to enhance revenue?
Well, I mean, the, not the revenue for them, not property tax, but the revenue for the town through local receipts.
So I think either property tax or meals tax, hotel.
Oh, okay. I think I should say what we mean then, okay.
Well, it's really.
So what do you think, what do you think when you hear that?
Um, like, um, membership fees at BD Center or something crazy like that, you know? So, and, especially because the first thing it says is BD Center here.
I know, I know.
All right, so you're saying enhance property tax and, and meals?
No, it wasn't increased property tax. That wasn't my goal.
Commercial, right?
Right.
Non-residential property tax.
Yes, yes.
All right, commercial property tax, meals tax.
How about just local revenue?
Yeah, local revenue. Let's put that. Good idea.
Okay, track local revenue. Perfect, thank you. Got to be careful of the words. Okay. Um, next one, increased revenue generation.
Yeah, so there's something missing here again. Um, so this thing about tourism and revolving in enterprise fees.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Those are missing.
Yeah.
Well, we just got this, so.
Right.
Okay, we'll bring that, we'll add that to the next, next time we do that, okay? And then I, I want to wrap this up. Um, increased revenue generation, this is a big one. I'm tightening the town.
So, sorry, we're on, is this the next one that I have is clarify five-year priorities and expected financial impact?
I think that's the discussion we have when we look at the capital budget and the town manager's budget.
Yeah, these staff tasks, this looks like a, just the beginning of the list, like there's a lot more stuff.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple of things, but, I mean.
So maybe by the time we get to the budgets, there'll be more things on this list.
Well, those both came under something which seems to have gotten lost. It says endorse and update financial stability goals. So that was what those two things were, and that makes sense on that context.
What's the select board task on this, number twenty-four?
Uh, well, I mean, I think we need to just keep pushing to, to make sure we get an understanding of kind of the five-year plan, right?
I think we have to force ourselves to look at year four and five instead of just looking at year two.
Yep, and I think, you know, I mean, the concern that I have is that there's, you know, you hear a lot of these discussions that there's a lot on the table, right? And, okay, how, how are we going to be able to afford it all, right? So I think, you know, the more that we get this, that visibility, um, you know, I just think it's going to be critically important.
Yep.
Again, I think, I really do think that when we look at our capital, um, capital plan, we'll be going out five years, ten years?
Ten years. We're doing ten.
So we'll get a lot of these questions answered during that process.
Cameron's also talking about operating budgets.
It's both. It's both. It's the whole thing. It's the whole picture. Because it all comes, I mean, it all ends up coming out of the same pockets ultimately, right? So, but yes, I mean, it, it's the whole thing.
And, and I think we need to put enough time on the agenda that night or whatever night to really talk about what Cameron just said. How can we afford it all? What are the priorities so that we, you know?
That's what came up under RTE, right? Is you really got to look hard at your spending.
Yeah.
Whether it's capital operating.
That's right.
The whole thing.
Really, I mean, we'll look at our projections.
Okay, I'm sorry that I'm rushing through this because this is probably one of the most important goals in our packet as far as, it's a long-term goal. Um, and we'll come back to it again when we have more input from the town. And we will certainly look at this when we do our capital plan and our first cut at the town manager's budget. And then we've got, um, protect and enhance the diversity of housing stock. This is under.
Oh, we just skipped one.
What is it?
Yeah.
So work to cut costs and tighten the town's budget, you know, by twenty-six.
I was talking about that being the, when we look at the town manager's budget.
Okay, yep.
I forget when it is, but it's.
Yep.
That's the same question again. How can we afford it? Blah, 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 okay.
Exactly, same question.
One of the priorities, yep.
And then I'm on the last page here and it's, it's.
I think we should, it says support the housing production plan and around neighbors that go with it. Carrie had some good suggestions.
Yeah, it's not under financial planning, though. It's under diversity, equity and inclusion.
Yeah, there's, somehow that heading got lost. Twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight are, are in that area.
Okay, protect the diversity of housing stock. Um, I think we're making progress there.
Can I, Mary, can I ask a question to you about this goal? Because early on, we had talked about workforce housing. So we're specifically saying affordable housing, not specifically workforce housing, right?
Hmm.
I'm just being clear. I mean, we've talked both in this goal.
Yeah, maybe we should change, it should say both.
I think it should say workforce housing because we have a lot of eighty percent AMI in the pipeline. So it's.
So that's probably something that if we actually looked around and said, who have we got working on trying to develop workforce housing? We would actually not find that task assigned to anybody, so.
No, I think the, I think the Affordable Housing Trust is very aware of that. And in fact, Carrie has, which talks about ARPA, has specifically designated that the,
the ninety-one B.
The, the money from, um, ARPA funds this year would be for workforce housing.
And, sorry, just remind me, because I know you mentioned, workforce housing is defined as?
Between a hundred and a hundred fifty percent area median income. You think that's right, Rich?
I think we should leave the word affordable housing and, and put and workforce housing because we are meeting the SHI, but there's all different levels of affordable housing.
That's what we're saying, though. We're saying affordable and then.
Right, and then there's those lower levels too. There's all these different levels.
Everyone's always thinking about eighty percent AMI, right? So I think it's worth adding and workforce housing.
Exactly, exactly.
And workforce housing, fine. Okay, then we're looking, I'm moving ahead. Our review, impact of the RTE, I think we're done, we did that, we had the forum. We'll have the, um, vote on November eighteenth and, um, and expand under representative voices. I think one of the things that's, we're doing, the town is doing is through the, um, the town meeting study committee is how to find out, get more people involved in the decision-making, especially a town meeting. And then Carrie's listed some things that we're doing here. I don't know what else to do.
I'm going to suggest that the next time we look at this, let's, let's start at the bottom and work back.
Yeah, yeah, that's a really good idea.
Okay, let's go. Okay.
So that.
Start at the bottom and work backwards.
And when is that? In like two or three months, right?
Yeah, two or three months.
Okay, that's great.
And we'll have, we'll have done the, the capital planning, we'll have looked at the town budget.
Okay, great. I think we're coming along really well.
No, I think that's fair. There's more discussion to be had on some of these, but it's like, at some point, you're sort of like, okay.
Yeah, I know, we're kind of running.
Like, oh, I don't want to keep us here till ten o'clock.
We have made a lot of progress on a lot of those. It's good.
And, yeah, that way we give, we give more time as it moves.
I agree. Thank you. That was a great suggestion. Okay, we're on to ARPA.
Okay, I won't keep you here until ten o'clock. I, I don't have, I don't have a whole lot to report. So Chris Carmody, our legislative liaison risk manager, is the staff member now that is, um, managing and overseeing the ARPA grant program from here on out, now that we have all of the funds allocated. So Chris was unable to be with us this evening, but he will be here for other quarterly updates. He did put this report together. Just to remind you, the town received about five point six five million dollars in ARPA funding. We have been, that was back in fiscal twenty-two. We have to provide an annual report to the federal government. We have filed, um, three annual reports. Our next annual report is April thirty, twenty twenty-five. And the back half of the report is the project inventory. So it shows each of the projects that funding was allocated to by fiscal year. And I'd like to just spend a minute going through this just so it's clear to everybody what has been closed out and what continues. So for fiscal twenty-two, there were three projects that were funded. Um, one was the lost revenue for the parking meter program, one was the trolley demonstration project, and the other was hazard pay for, generally for public safety employees who worked throughout the course of, of the pandemic. All of those projects have been closed out. You can see the parking meter, the full four hundred thousand dollars was, was moved into that parking meter fund. And as we talked about, one of the times recently when we, we talked about this, that money is sitting in the parking meter, um, revolving fund. And it will stay there until town meeting acts to, to move it elsewhere. So we would expect a town meeting, a warrant article on the twenty twenty-five town meeting to move that elsewhere.
So does that then count as money that's been expended?
It has been expended for that purpose. It was taken in as lost revenue. So the minute it was, it was taken in as lost revenue, a hundred percent of it was committed to that, um, activity. And now it can be recommitted to something else.
So you're saying four hundred thousand was committed, a hundred and three thousand was spent?
A hundred and three was expended for program activities. We do have a contract that we will be letting in the next few weeks to remove the parking meters as this board directed, um, months ago. And then the balance, which will be significant, more than two hundred thousand dollars will be available for.
Where will that go, Carrie? Where does that two ninety-seven go?
It has been not yet determined, so it can be released and go to free cash, it could be appropriated for any number of things. I note the recommendation for sure would be a one-time expense.
Yep, great.
That would be, we'll know that for town meeting when we vote, or ask the town meeting to vote, okay, great.
Great.
So my, my macro concern, not going through each of the line items, is I just want to make sure, because the stuff that I was reading about the ARPA stuff was, it has to be obligated by the end of December of this year, right? And what I was reading is obligation means it's either spent, or there's a contract, hey, I've got a contract here that I've signed that says this is to be spent, right? And so I just want to make sure, because when I hear like, oh, there's money, and we put it over here, but we haven't spent it, and it's going to sit there until we just, like, if the federal audit comes back and says, okay, show me the contract that says you've spent the money, like, what do we?
Right.
How does that work? I just want, because that's sort of my macro thing on all of these.
Yeah, and so for, again, for this particular one, it was taken in as lost revenue to that activity. So it was committed 100% as lost revenue for the parking meter program.
But what about, okay, but what about something that we are going to commit today? Like, I know this is a long time, this is kind of an unusual circumstance, right? But how do we make sure that?
So at, when we presented the last time, we, we talked about the fact that we would be committing through grant agreements. And we have a template from the federal government that has been approved to use to commit through a grant agreement. And this would be for something that we, we're not yet at a contract commitment, but we've allocated via a grant to a certain activity, with the intention of then committing further through a contract.
So let's just think this through, so, say, the 91B Main Street, that parcel, right?
Yes.
500,000, we're not going to buy that by the end of this year, so we're going to write a grant agreement.
To the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay.
To take those funds.
Okay, and say they don't spend all that money, what happens to it?
It is, so it's, it's a housing funding commitment, it will stay with the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay. And we have somebody earmarked for every one of these things that we've got on here that would go to, that they, so it.
We do, I have two things that I want to put on your radar of that, that I have a question about. So again, fiscal '22 is closed out, the unobligated balance was already taken into account when we looked at the last round of allocation, so that was, that was recaptured.
This was recaptured?
Yes. So for fiscal '23, we have, we have eight items. COVID supplies, that, that is completed. The commitment to the Affordable Housing Trust is committed, completed, again, because that funding has been transferred to the trust. The sidewalk plow that, that has been committed in purchase, that was purchased in fiscal '23. So cell service, that item, you can see, we have only 8,900 expended out of 25,000. That is an ongoing project, we have a, an agreement with a consultant that, that helps provide assistance. So we would expect that to be expended, but again, it's committed. The economic development initiatives, that has been fully committed and/or expended. The transportation initiatives, the 200,000, we, that has been fully committed, but only 188,000 right now has been either expended or under, under a scope, under a contract scope. The cultural arts, that $20,000, we have not done anything with that. This is something that Mimi Graney is, is working on, and what we're finding, two, two things. The, the amount of money needed to, to move some of these items forward is pretty small. So it would take, it would take a lot to spend 20,000, and Mimi has been phenomenally successful in getting grants. So that, this is something that, that I need to do some further follow-up on, and maybe back to you next month.
Okay, so you're saying some of that money might end up being available at town meeting, but we don't know.
Not at town meeting, in, in front of you before the end of the calendar year.
Because we would have to commit it to something else before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Or else it's, we won't be able to spend it, right?
Right, and so the last item for fiscal '23 was to develop an inventory of the subsidizing, subsidized housing. We expended 5,000 of the 30, we released a 25, and that was reprogrammed when we talked about ARPA a couple of months back. So on the next page for fiscal '24, the first item, municipal strategic planning, that's the project, Terry, you were just talking about, how do all of, how do, how do all of these different strategic plans fit together? So I'm working on something and hope to bring that to you in January.
But don't we have to commit it?
We're going to commit it through a grant agreement, where we're going to have a scope for the, for the project. The GIS data gathering, we released that, and you reprogrammed it. The feasibility for joining MWRA, we did release that and reprogram that, and that was, that was how we were able to get some additional funding for some of this transportation work as well. It's not that we're not moving forward with this, in fact, we, we may be bringing an IMA forward to you in November or December to partner with the town of Maynard, Acton, and maybe some other communities for a small dollar amount, maybe in the $10,000 range, that we would fund within, probably within the enterprise fund. The DEI initiatives, we approved $75,000, we've only spent $5,000. So this, this one is, is somewhat of concern as well, that, you know, the, I think we've done a lot, but it's been with, with small amounts of funding, and absent hiring a staff person, I'm not sure how we would spend that money, and we're not, wouldn't expect to bring that forward. I have been reaching out to neighboring communities to see if there's an interest in sharing a staff person, like we do with many, many other initiatives. There may be, but it's not a strong possibility at, at this point.
Well, and the staff person's a permanent, and then this is a one-time dollar thing, so it makes it hard to.
It's not, it's not a good match.
Right, right.
Was that the original intention of the 75,000?
No, it, it was to do consulting work, but we have, we've had a hard time getting going with, with consultants. We, we are reaching out to another person to see who's a consultant in the area, to see what type of initiatives that person is doing with other communities, and seeing if there is a match there. But I think we may have trouble spending that. So that's something that we need to talk about further. Evaluate feasibility of the stormwater fund, that has been completely committed through a contract and work that is ongoing. The municipal buildings, energy audit, that $100,000, we will have, we expect to have that under contract end of December, beginning of January. So this is a, this is a really interesting project, and hopefully the staff will come in and talk to you about this. This is a joint project between, with all municipal buildings and school buildings to do energy audits and identify projects and funding for energy efficiency. The Emerson basketball and tennis, and Ride Out basketball and tennis courts, $130,000. I would expect that work to be done in the spring. So again, committed through a, a grant agreement, it's part of the existing capital plan, and we would be moving forward in the spring. The next item, the level, level three charging at public safety, I am questioning this as well. We do not, long-term public safety is not going to be at that site, that site is not big enough to house that. It doesn't seem to make sense to expend these funds. Right now, we have, we have one Tesla, we have probably four Mustang, the, the Mach-Es, so they're, they're using two different charging networks. Anybody who, who drives an electric vehicle, you know you're not supposed to do level three charging, you know, all, all of the time, and so this, I think there is probably a better, better electric project to dedicate this to, but I, I can't tell you what this is exactly, but we'll have something coming up on that. Okay, so the, the facility study for Public Works and Public Safety, as I was listening to the 2229 Main Street Task Force, the chair speak, looking at the requests for additional funding yet this fiscal year, which we do not have programmed, this particular item came to mind. So we have two sources of funding for the feasibility studies. We have a warrant article from 2014, that is $130,000 for Public Works. We added to it in fiscal '24, this 150 pulled in Public Safety, and we have not moved forward yet on this. I, I think in the not-too-distant future, we would be ready to move forward, but I don't know that we have 270,000, 280,000 dollars worth of work, that's a lot of work. And so I think this could be reprogrammed if, if the board is looking to go forward with 2229 Main Street. This would be a good match, it's one-time money for, for some additional due diligence on that project, that property. The next is, is the 250th Committee, $500,000. This has been moved to their budget, so from my perspective, it, it is committed 100%.
So is there like a grant agreement then that you had to do?
We, we will be, we are doing grant agreements on anything that's, will be outstanding on 12/31/24, just to cover all bases. And then the, some additional upgrades to the ambulance that has, that has been completed. So then when we get into fiscal '25, we don't have a lot of progress just yet. I mean, we are, the, the munis payroll implementation, that is, that is underway, that will happen this fiscal year. The, the tree initiatives, that, for the 250th, that money has been committed. When I say not much has been done, we're just in, in terms of spending, but, but planning.
Are there any on these lists that you're questioning?
There, there really isn't anything on this list, because these are, these are so new.
Kerry, can I ask one question about the Route Two Cora study, and this is why I went to the minutes. When we were having that conversation, we talked about, is $50,000 enough, right? And then Steve Dukin said, well, when we were talking to the state, it would have been really helpful to have $85,000. And I thought during the course of those conversations, we sort of, we didn't, I don't know if we voted, that's the problem, but I think there was sentiment to expand that amount of funding, and I just couldn't figure out if we really approved that or not.
You, you did not, but there was a commitment from CPW to use some of their budgeted funds for, for that project. They would, I'm sure they would gladly take $35,000 of, of ARPA, and, and we can talk about that, but they have committed their, some existing capital funds from their road project, their road, annual road plan.
And it was only in the context, there were some leftover funds, when we had gone through that spreadsheet, that's, I think we said if there was funds, it would be great to use those, but thank you for that explanation, that explains it.
So there's a few things, right, that you went through, that are potential areas where we might not fully spend the money, or, you know, hey, look, it was a good idea at the time, but, you know, we're not sure that it's a project now. We're going to get to a place where it gets to the end of December fairly quickly. Is there sort of a, look, if we end up with extra money, where do we, where can we put it? To something that's, so in my mind, I'm thinking like, you, could you put it to like road paving? Like, we know that there's a deficit in, no, but seriously, there's a deficit in paving the roads, we know, we're going to ask for money. Hey, look, I, I don't know what we'll end up with, but if we end up with some $200,000, $300,000, hey, you know what, we can write a really quick one that says we're going to pave the roads by the end of, you know, grant allocated by the end of the year, it becomes a little bit of the catch-all for any leftover or something, it's just a thought.
I would say that or facilities, we have a lot of facilities work that, that can be done as well. So, yes, we have some work to do, we're on a short timetable. We likely are, are going to be back at one of your next couple of meetings with some ideas for some adjustments. I, I feel like, you know, I don't want to speak for Chris, but I do feel like he's had enough conversations with his federal contacts, that if things are locked down in a grant agreement, but something changes, that we can do an adjustment to a grant agreement. But we, we definitely need to have everything committed through either a contract or a grant agreement. I can't remember if I said, you know, we're, we're planning to come to you quarterly with the update, you will hear from us sooner on a few things. I'd like to be able to, to bring a couple of people each time to talk about some of the work that they have been, either that they did, or that they're planning to do, so there's some visibility into how beneficial these funds have been to the community, and the things that we're able to do, and the partnerships, and.
Yeah, I think it's really important, I really like having this quarterly report. I understand a lot better what's going on with ARPA, and I really like the transparency of it. So I, I would support anybody you want to bring in.
Okay.
Also, for the, the public, for example, the Public Works Public Safety Facility Study, if there's two sources of funding, one was voted by town meeting, the other was.
Yeah, yeah.
Spend the ARPA money first, and then, because if, if something, if the town meeting appropriation ends up not being fully expended, then we just reclaim and repurpose it, because there's not a time.
I think there are enough things in, in play that if you are looking for funding to advance 2229 Main Street, that we can, we can pull from other places as well.
The last time we went through this, Kerry, I think at the bottom line, you had 64,000 that wasn't allocated, right? Has that changed, based on updated information?
I believe it has changed based on, there were a couple of things that were not included on my list, such as the ambulance upgrade and the, and the, the plow at, at Public Works. So I think we're about even.
Okay, good, good.
One other idea, the, the question came up as to whether or not any of the state funding for MCI Concord could be used to pay our legal expenses that are related to MCI Concord? And it, I think Chris has that question, but if it turns out that it can't, then, then that might be a bucket that could also be added if there's anything that looks like it's left over to say, you know, funding the legal expenses for 2025.
Why wouldn't it be?
Well, we're not sure. We, we're, we're still waiting on the language from A and F to figure out what we can actually spend the money on.
And that's by the end of the month, is when we're going to have that?
Well, we're, we're hopeful.
It's supposed to be here or any day now.
We're supposed to spend the money, but we don't know yet what the rules are.
Tell us what we can spend it on, but.
Okay, but is there a reason why legal was pulled out separately from all the other things we're going to spend money on?
Yeah, it's, I mean, just because we, we know that it can add up, that there, that there will be legal expenses, and we didn't budget them, so.
Oh, we budgeted, okay. So it would be similar to 2229, potentially.
Any other questions for Kerry?
No, appreciate the update, the details are really helpful.
That was great, that was very helpful, I think we can, I do know. Okay, Carmody, you want to talk to us about the financial audit?
Sure, you know what, I'm going to just recognize that it's 10 of nine, so we're behind schedule. So you all got this memo in your packet. This is a report from the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, of which I'm chair, back in August now. The Financial Audit Advisory Committee reviewed the financial reports for the town for FY '23, that's our obligation to do that. So the committee is reviewing these financials on behalf of the Select Board and reporting back to you. So that's the purpose of this. And we'll do this also for CMLP as well as the schools. So, you know, first and foremost, the audit went well. The financial statements really represent the finances of the town. The town, and again, this is FY '23. We just finished FY '24, so this is old. It's a year old. The health, you know, the, the town has a, at that time, had a very healthy unassigned fund balance. And in the town, there's multiple funds that, that are included in this report. The general fund is the one that is the largest and one of most interest to most people. The unassigned health, the unassigned fund balance at the end of FY '23 was almost $13 million. It was 12.9 million. It's not exactly the same as free cash because these are accounting practices. But at the end of FY '23, we had a healthy balance, and it had increased by just about 2.4 million. So it was good. So our finances are in good shape. But what was also in this letter, and what we include traditionally in this letter, are issues that are identified during the audit that represent sort of, not weaknesses, but things in our internal controls that could be improved. There are a number of things that are reported in here. And, you know, I can go through each one of them. I know you all saw the report. But I guess what I'd like to try to do is to summarize what these issues are related to. And then Anthony, if you want to comment on this, I think would help. First, I also just want to note that this was FY '23. Anthony, it was new a year and a half ago. We've had a lot of changes in staff. So a lot of these issues were probably not jumped on right away because we haven't had management in place for some of those. But there were some issues. So for example, in reconciliating, reconciliating accounts, there are some issues that will help with the Munis, the Munis implementation, the current implementation. And then we're going to be moving forward with the payroll side of Munis. Those, those initiatives that Anthony's team are working on are going to directly impact our ability to address some of these audits and controls. And most importantly, Anthony and his team is committed to addressing all of these issues by the end of this fiscal year.
Oh, great, that's.
Because, because now he'll have the tools, he's got his staff trained, et cetera. I'll point, you know, there's one that was raised as more important than others, which was some reconciliation with water and sewer. There were some, some balances there that has been an issue for a couple of years. There was a new financial system that was put in place about three years ago, and I think this is sort of lingering from that implementation. There's some software issues there that I think will help with that implementation, to help with those reconciliations, and I think those will be addressed as well. And then, there's some advisory things in here about new GASP rules that are coming. There's one around lease payments and some other things that Anthony, again, has, is committed to addressing and looking at. So, so all in all, I think it, it looks like a lot of issues, but I also, I'm very confident that Anthony and his team are going to address these issues. And you saw the responses in here. So Anthony, I don't know, do you want to add anything more from your perspective to the audit? Other than he's starting one all over again now with FY '24?
You did a great job with that. No, really, I don't have much to add, other than a lot of the findings we, we're working on right away. And, you know, some things are, are funding. Funding is going to be an issue, like the utilities, reconciling utilities. We're looking to expand on using Munis and going to Munis utility billing. So you'll see a capital warrant article in there from, from me to help in, in that area because, you know, that's our roadblock right now is expanding on, so.
So like, how much would that, how much is that?
I just asked for a quote. We haven't gotten it yet.
So would that replace NISC?
So you'd still use that for electric, but for water, sewer, and trash, we would be looking to bring it.
Yeah.
In on our financial system.
So Anthony, I know that it takes a lot of training to go from one system to another. And this last transition was harder and took longer than anyone expected. So are you confident that if you add new software again, that, that you can really get it implemented quickly and accurately?
So I'm always ambitious. I like to say yes, but in reality, just, you know, as we work through Munis payroll, and we've been doing that for, really shortly after I started, I think. And, you know, with the, with the goal of, of implementing that for January 1st, we're at a tight timeline that, you know, we're pushing to see if we can make it. I, I wouldn't be surprised if I had to delay it a little bit, but some of the things are just beyond our control. When you, when you're working with consultants and they're sick and so forth, that just pushes us behind. It's not for the lack of our staff. We're putting in two to three days a week in, in meeting with them. So there's certain things that are outside of our control. But yeah, I think that a lot of, a lot of the issues that we're having is, will be resolved because reconciliation is, is an issue with utilities when you have two different systems.
Right.
Now, when you do it all in one system, they're going to be talking to each other behind the scenes. So that's, that becomes a less of an issue. Same with the Munis payroll and, and everything that we do. The goal is to, you know, work smarter and not harder.
Right.
And become more efficient and, and save money. And, you know, that's our goal from, from everything that we've started to do. And we've made some great progress already with savings in FY '25 budget that, that, you know, one of the things with the support of the town manager, we were able to implement our OBR, which is in lieu of Social Security. You may have heard some feedback about that. Well, that's something that's going to save the town $175,000 this year. So that's no small task. It, it's something I know that was on Carrie's radar, and she was great to support that, which is a big help because anything that we try to do, you need the town manager's support on that. And Carrie was fantastic, saying, all right, go for it. And it was a lot of work, but that's something, you know, that we, we work towards, so.
So is it safe to say, Anthony, that, I mean, I hear the word Munis a lot, and I don't know what that means, but that's okay. Is it safe to say that our systems that we were using to run our departments were pretty antiquated, and they weren't integrated, and that we've made a lot of progress to bringing them up to date and integrating them? Is, were we, were we way behind the eight ball to start with? And we're, in other words, are we, are our systems now, once we get this done, are we going to be like state, not even state of the art, but should they be industry standard?
Yeah, we're using what most communities are using. And it's an all-inclusive, you know, admins served the town well for a long period of time, but the town has grown and, and we're doing more. So the ability of admins is, is, is not quite to what we needed to do. And then again, when you're working with a bunch of different systems, that eventually you have to merge them with journal entries and so forth. That's what, you know, that's when you have these reconciliation errors.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
So in 2017, I think it was 2017, we submitted a warrant article to get funding for Munis. That was one of the first things that I did. And we went forward, did our due diligence, got our quotes, got everything together, and we couldn't get the contract signed. The first contract I signed as acting town manager in January of 2022 was the Munis contract, to finally kick that loose. So for almost five years, we were waiting to move forward with that project. And I think the other thing that I would say, and I know the, the first implementation of Munis was delayed, but that was the general ledger piece. That was the biggest, the biggest piece. Munis is a enterprise, ERP, enterprise resource, planning. You know, it is, it covers all of our business needs. And the, the transition to Munis utility billing, a lot of that will be borne by the enterprise funds, the cost of that.
This is a success story that I don't.
Because it's taken five, six years, it's.
Still, it's a success story that I think we should celebrate more.
Absolutely.
Will the implementation of Munis for the water and sewer change the integrated billing that we have?
Yes, probably.
Okay, but it won't affect the light plants because that's, that's significant.
Right, that's why I asked the question I asked, because about 2018, 2019, the, the.
And I see.
Electric water utility billing was, was converted to NISC, which is a, which is an industry standard for municipal electric utilities.
Yep.
And, and pretty much the best that's out there. And, and the integration point there is that the meter reading, where the waters and the electric meters are, is pretty much, is done together. So there's a push-me-pull-you problem with, which, but the, but the accounting was, was not, for the water sewer side was, was done in the admin system. So I think, just to add to the, the Munis story too, the town had a lot of small system, sort of point solutions for different things that it was billing that kind of were bolted on to Munis, usually with, you know, as many enterprises used, spreadsheets and, and people knowing their jobs to get that done. So once Munis general ledger is available, then the opportunity for that to spread as the skills get in there. So I'm completely supportive of the idea of use, use one big tool and use it the way it's designed to be used.
Right.
And, and be successful in that way. There's this tension, as, as you well know, that the light plant runs on its own fiscal year, has its own ledger, is an independent, you know, accounting unit.
Complex billing.
It's, it's always tricky to figure out where, if there's going to be a seam, you just have to decide where that seam's going to be.
Right. So Anthony, is the, is the Munis general ledger fully implemented now?
It, it is fully implemented now, yes.
Great. So are you in the process of closing the books for fiscal '24, or have you closed them?
We've been closing the books for fiscal '24 since the summer, yeah.
So it's not totally done yet?
No, we're not totally done yet. And we could be, but I think, again, because we're running some different systems, it, it delays things. And one of the, one of our challenges is, is working with the schools to get some of their final numbers for CPS, so.
Okay. I'm, I'm just asking because like, what do you think the timetable will be? Because I want to make sure we have the free cash number and everything ready for town meeting.
Put it this way, Carrie, I've already have Markham coming in for November to start our FY '24 audit, which is months ahead of where we were at this point last year. So the goal is to, which means the fiscal year has to be closed, which means, you know, we work on getting free cash certified before April. You know, all of that was really a goal coming in to move up those timelines. So, you know, we can make some better recommendations.
What's your goal this year?
Decisions, yes.
Right, what's your timeline goal this year?
As soon as we can close the books, as soon as we finalize those last few outstanding issues with the schools, then, again, we have, I have the audit that's coming in in November, so the books got to be closed weeks. We got weeks away to get this done.
It's pressure.
I think one.
And Mark, to expand, I'm sorry, Mark, to expand on what you were saying too, with all those separate systems, those are costs that are going to go away, right? You know, we have cornerstone, we have ADP, you know, and all of those costs will, will go away with, with the Munis. And we'll have a little bit of a maintenance cost associated with Munis, but the goal again is, it's going to be save some money with those other separate programs.
It's ironic that we started with a, you know, look at the audit and we're ending up. At least I'm gaining much better understanding of the progress we've made as far as Munis and getting an integrated system that's up to industry standard and prevents a lot of errors and a lot of reconciliations. And I can't tell, I mean, I consider myself as somebody who's pretty well informed with what's happening in the town, and I have experience with implementing software. It's finally getting through to me what improvement this has been for the town. This is a story. I think, I think we should really, this is something we should be celebrating and, and communicating to the community. Because I, because it's been done kinds of in, in pieces, we haven't gotten a big feel for it, really.
Well, I, I feel, I feel that it will be a celebration when we get the books closed and we get this. I don't feel ready yet to celebrate.
No, it's, it's good stuff. Anthony, I just, I would ask to, for, and Carrie too, for your perspectives, right? So here we are, reading the report. It's got a handful of things, right? And say, hey, look, you know what? Here's some deficiencies, one might, one major from a couple of years ago, a few minor ones here. When you look at this report relative, you've been in other towns, Carrie, you've been in other towns, relative to other reports you've seen, is this like a, wow, what a clean bill of health? Is this sort of like, oh, this is typical, like, or is it like, oh my gosh, we're, I can't believe we got this many bad, bad marks? Like, how does it sort of sit?
You know, in, in my opinion, it's, it's kind of typical for some towns. I, I think that, you know, you had a, a transition in the finance office. You know, one of the audit findings is mentioned, you know, reconcile the budget, you know? And all that was is, you know, for, during FY '23, that they booked the budget that was in the warrant, but that actually wasn't the final budget because it changed, the schools changed. And so that just didn't get.
Manual processes.
So now, we go off of the town, the town clerk's votes. Because that's the final thing, that town meeting. So that shouldn't even, that, that'll go away.
Right, right.
You know, so that was just a transition.
There was a couple of things with the schools and the receivable and the utilities and all that stuff. So I just want to make sure this is sort of like, I mean, there are issues, they have to be addressed, but, you know, typical, normal course of business type of stuff.
Yeah, we, we still have some work to do. But, you know, we're, we're certainly going in a good, in a good direction. But there is still work to do and, and, you know, working with CPS is one of them. And, you know, confident that we'll come up with a solution that will, really, that last issue with closing the books timely is, is just that one missing piece. But Bob and I are discussing it all the time. And, and everything that we do on the town side is, has always the intention that the, that the schools could take full advantage of it.
And the issue with the schools was discussed at the school committee also.
Good.
In regards to the invoices that need to be provided. And they're voluminous. So I don't know how you're going to resolve that one, but yes, it's been discussed at school committee as well.
So I, I would just like to chime in. I would say it's not, oh my gosh, but it's more, if you went back and looked at management letters from audits in the past, it's more than you would see. I think it is a lot to do with transition. The couple of older outstanding items, the one with the withholding accounts, I think that gets cleared up through Munis payroll. That's a, that's a reconciliation. The utility billing, that's, that is outstanding from the transition from whatever Harris to NISC. I mean, this feels like a long time ago. The other thing that I wanted to mention, just for, for people who are familiar with the timing of audits in the private sector versus the public sector, our year is held open until 9:30. We track, there's certain activity, typically grant activity, typically federal grant activity, a lot on the school side, that we, we can track activity through 9:30. So we are not closing, we don't close on, on June 30, and everybody stays for 24 hours and the, and the audit is done. That doesn't happen. So in the best of times, we're, we're in front of the audit committee before Thanksgiving.
Well, I don't know if we even got there then, but.
In the best, in the best of times, but we're not, we're not there in August.
Yeah, it's June 30, but it's really more like September 30.
So when will the audit committee be looking at, what's?
Well, to Anthony's point, the audit is now starting in November. So we'll be looking at it December, January, depending how quickly they turn it around.
Okay.
So we're getting right back on track, I mean, yeah.
Great. So we'll have this report in front of us in what?
January, well, maybe February.
Great.
Yeah, it's the goal, certainly.
Yep.
Great.
Yeah, before the spring is the goal.
Yeah, I think spring makes more sense.
Do I remember correctly that we're planning on using the Munis budgeting module this year to fill the budget?
So we have a different platform that we're going to be using called ClaireGov. That's what we're building our capital plan in.
Oh, that's the benchmarking app.
Yeah, so it goes much more beyond that. And it's actually, it aligns with one of your goals as far as being transparent because what you're going to see is an online budget book and it's.
Sorry, we lost the audio again.
Thank you, Tracy.
There we go.
Can you hear us now, Tracy? Can you hear us?
Thank you.
So it's a, it's a, an interactive tool that's, that's really building the budget. So right now, as, for instance, as departments.
They go to executive session and say, we were not pleased with the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as we're building out the capital plan, it's, it's a running tally that keeps, you know, that lets us know where everything stands. So you'll see the end result of that, and it does, it does do some benchmarking against other communities and so forth. And it's much more transparent and. It's much more transparent, and, you know, that's a goal to do. Also, another thing is Munis, we're going to look at open checkbook, so, you know...
That's what we have here.
Right. All public information.
Not that kind of open checkbook.
Motion to adjourn.
Different, hopefully that cuts down on FOIA requests.
Just joking.
Good deal.
I have to go.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie.
Great.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yep, all good.
That was very well set up. And thank you, Court. Court's only a fine...
That's right, he is, yep.
He is.
Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
No, motion to adjourn.
Up to 760 responses on the town meeting committee.
Wow, great.
Just got the latest update, so.
That's great.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, yes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Anything to sign, Andrea?